You're good to go, Mayor.
All right. Thank you for joining us this evening for tonight's City Council Study Session before our meeting at 6:30. We have three items on the agenda tonight. With that, we will not be taking public comment during the study session, but as always, we welcome our comments to our emails and also in the YouTube chat for us to review later. Madam Clerk, I will allow you to call on people since I can't see everyone. And with that, let's begin with item number one, change order number one to contract 1920-120.
Nathan?
Okay. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Let me pull up my presentation. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this will just be a brief presentation regarding change order number one for our FY2017 sewer maintenance project phase two. And to kind of orient everybody with the project and where we're at. This area, the SMP 2017 project is generally bounded by Porter Avenue on the west, 12th Avenue northeast on the east, Rock Creek Road in Rock Creek Road to the south. So the Phase One project is a Lewis Green teal area shown by the red lines, blue lines, green lines on the map. But the project of interest here tonight is the orange line, which is bounded by that thick black line, the Phase Two project. So this project was previously awarded to Jordan Contractors from Combs, Oklahoma. Just a little bit over $370,000 for the overall project. About a half mile of 15-inch sewer line that would be replacing 11 manholes, 120 calendar days for the project overall with an estimated completion in early October. What we are proposing with this change order is to add a little bit of pipe to the job. 640 feet, which is shown by the red line, which is just north of the orange line on this map. This additional footage was requested by our line maintenance division due to the existing condition of the pipe. By doing this now, replacement of this line, we will get a new pipe going north in this area up to the existing interceptor that was installed approximately three years ago. So that means that we shouldn't have to be back here in the foreseeable future, and that means we'll only disturb this area one time. So less impact on our customers and residents. What this increase will mean is for the 640 feet of line, approximately three manholes, increase of about $90,000 or about 25% of the overall project costs. And we're doing this through existing pay items. So we won't have to worry. We'll be compliant with state competitive bidding act requirements. The new contract amount proposed is $462,434, and we would give the contractor an additional 30 days for the to complete this additional length of line. And I said it would be brief, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
We have a question from Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Just could you maybe, in your opinion, the it's a pretty significant increase percentage-wise anyway. Any particular reason you or reasons you can identify about why it would be such a large percent increase anyway?
Because the percent increases is the amount of line left to to kind of finish out this segment. Hindsight being what it is, probably included in the bid, and we think we would have still seen similar cost numbers for it. So it looks like a big increase, but it doesn't really wouldn't have would have been differently, probably wouldn't have changed the overall cost of that, that work, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
I'm not seeing any other questions. Mayor?
All right, then on to item number two, kind of just an explanation of the ACOG weighted voting resolution that is on tonight's agenda.
And Russell, go ahead and share your screen if you have a PowerPoint.
Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Clark, City Council. My name is Russell Anderson. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Communications Systems Manager. I'm in charge of the Communication Center and the radio system for the city of Norman. Was asked to briefly outline the changes of the ACOG contract as it pertains to the weighted voting. Before I do that, I'm going to give you a little information about ACOG itself. ACOG was formed in April of 1988 with the purpose to implement, administer, and coordinate the operation of regional 911 services in central Oklahoma. The city of Norman, one of its original members, as a member, benefits include several, several different areas. First off, buying power with 21-piece apps. It brings a strength in numbers, strength to draw in industry-leading tech companies, and then the strength to negotiate with those companies to to bring forward a state-of-the-art systems at the best cost possible to us and and other members of the COG. In the last couple of months, one example, last couple of months, a review committee that I served on scored responses to RFP from nine call handling solutions and seven IP network solutions from leading companies worldwide. After three phases of scoring, we've collectively selected and the board has approved Solocom and NextGen 911 or NGA 911 for our next generation 911 call handling solution. This new technology will allow the capability to eventually bring in pictures, video over 911 and will immediately impact the accuracy of our cellphone 911 location services. Basically, it's going to allow us to do what Uber's been doing for years now, unfortunately. In addition, they they bring in support. ACOG employs three certified field technicians and three GIS specialists that would otherwise cost individual agencies hundreds of thousands of dollars in salaries, benefits, and maintenance agreements to fulfill what what they're doing for us. Finally, as a as a member of ACOG Communications Officers throughout the COG are offered a multitude of industry-standard classes and certification programs that actually exceed the minimum national training requirements, and this is at no cost to its members. ACOG is fully funded. ACOG is fully funded by 911 fees that you see on your phone bills. So now to the waiting. There is a waiting weighted voting was based on landlines within PSAP boundaries. Whereas members representing less than 50,000 lines received one vote for every 1,000 lines in their jurisdiction. Members representing greater than 50,000 lines still receive that initial 50 votes, but an additional vote for each additional 2,800 lines. So as people turn down, as people turn down landlines and Lewis cellphones and business transitions to voice-over IP as alternative measures, we identified that we needed a new way to to weigh the voting. So the new agreement proposes that members representing populations less than 75,000 receive one vote for every 2,500. I'm sorry, we're saying one vote for every 2,500 population. Those those members representing more than 75,000 would still get receive that initial 30 votes with an additional vote for each 7,000 in population over that 75. Population is calculated using Esri Community Analysis. It should be, it should be noted that this new weighted voted was actually proposed in November of 2018, ratified by the 911 ACOG Board in December of the same year, and we've actually been utilizing it since January of 2019. Oh, any questions you may have?
Let me unshare the screen so I can see. I don't see any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for that explanation. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood what that was on the agenda tonight. And I believe we will also be renewing our our membership with ACOG this evening as well. I've appreciated their help on a variety of projects, and I definitely find it beneficial to be involved with that, especially with things like RTA on the horizon. So with that, we will move on to item number three, which is the COPS grant.
Okay, Mr. Steggy.
John, you're muted.
Kenny was me.
He's gone to town.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name's John Steggy. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Standards Administrator for the Police Department. Among the things I do is I also manage departmental grants. I'm here tonight to talk about the 2020 COPS Hiring Grant with a proposal to fully staff the School Resource Officer Program. Little bit of overview about School Resource Officer Program. PSST 2 required the addition of 13 police personnel to implement School Resource Program with joint funding by participating public school systems within the district or within the municipality. Purpose of this program is to ensure the safety and security of our schools and to break the cycles that marginalize youth by proactively targeting the underlying causes of social harm, which begin in childhood. There's an associated memorandum of understanding with the Norman Public School District that details the limits of SRO involvement in student discipline process and protects the rights of students in an attempt to encourage active involvement in the school community. It also does several other things, but including selection and including other administrative details, but that's one of the most important things that we have in the memorandum. Instead of simply responding to behaviors, SROs have an opportunity to pool resources, share information with local entities, and redirect refocused energy rather than simply punishing individuals. So how do SROs and community learning and policing services or COPS? How are they related? Well, SROs are a resource for their schools and provide guidance, direction, and assistance to students and parents in partnership with faculty and staff, and the administration is responsible for discipline, taking the lead role in connecting students with support services needed. On March 10th, the department applied for the COPS Hiring Program Grant to hire at the last four SROs to be assigned to our elementary schools in accordance with the MRO, MOU, excuse me. By placing SROs in our elementary schools, we'll be able to assist children most at risk for crime and violence. The specific use of the grant is that it can be defined in the award of June 29th, where COPS Hiring Funds cover up up to 75% of the approved entry-level salary and benefits of newly hired or rehired full-time sworn career law enforcement officers. The award period for this grant is 36 months with the requirement to retain all positions hired under this award for 12 months after its completion. A minimum of 25% local cash match is required, but the maximum federal share for the entire grant period is $125,000 per officer. The funds can specifically be used to hire new officers that are in addition to our current funded level of sworn officer positions, and they must be hired on or after the official start date of the of the grant. They can be used to rehire officers that were laid off as a result of budget reductions or rehire officers scheduled to be laid off at the time of application by a jurisdiction. So in summary, the grant details are hiring quest requests for four new officers to be used as SROs. The total projected amount for the entire project is $1,011,915. Computation of of what share falls to what is based on the base salary per position. So the base salary for year one officer for pay and benefits is $81,797 per position. For year two is $84,294, and year three is $86,887. The federal share and local costs, the total federal share will be $500,000. The total local share is $511,915. Decreasing portion of federal share through the life of the grant. The year one federal share is $199,209. Federal share for year two is $158,008. And then year three, it's $142,783. And then the local share is $127,979 for year one, $179,170 for year two, and $224,766 for year three. That's a summary of the grant. I'm here to answer questions if there are any.
Hey. Don, can you unshare your screen? My button is hidden.
I would love to.
Thank you. Okay. I am not seeing any hands raised, Mayor, for questions.
Councilor Petron. That's actually lots of hands. We'll get it all.
Okay. Oh, there they are. Sorry.
The local share is that divided 50/50 with NPS? Is that how this typically works under PSST?
That's probably a question for the chief and for finance. I can tell you that for the grant purposes, it's just the the grant or us, the city, would be responsible for providing that money, however we get that funding.
Okay, then I guess chief. Or I guess city manager. I don't know who that would ask. I know it's under PSST. Is it 50/50? Is that how it's been under the?
That's what it has been. I don't take that as that we expected them to be able to pay 50% the whole time. That was part of the reason we would apply for this grant to help with their side and our side. The schools was very upfront at the start of this program of how much money they had and where they could probably get to. And to think that they're going to be able to pay 50% for these 13 officers, I don't believe was ever the idea at the beginning of this.
Okay, so I was just listening to MPS' meeting this afternoon. And I, you may not be able to answer this, I don't know, but should they, and maybe you can answer it on behalf of the SROs we have currently, I'm just trying to understand how the program works, but when the kids aren't able to go to school for the COVID, were those existing SROs reassigned to the field for regular police work, and would that be how this would work for these officers that are in the schools, should the schools not be having children?
Yes, that's that's correct. They are reassigned, and they work in patrol. Normally, during a normal school year, when you're outside of COVID times, they would, some would work patrol, and then they try to do their training, any additional training in the summer. Some would still be assigned to summer school at the high school and maybe another location for summer school. But yeah, we reassign them in the off time.
Okay, and then under the federal grant, would we be in violation of the grant if they're not functioning in an SRO capacity due to COVID?
I can answer that.
I believe so, but I'll like.
I can answer that, and the answer is no, we would not be.
Thank you. I'll pass to somebody else. Okay, Councilmember Holman.
Appreciate the presentation there. Most of the conversations I recall from 2014 and 15, when we were talking about making PSST permanent and creating the SRO program, we really did talk a lot about a partnership. I don't, I do not recall the council at that time being under the impression that the city would bear the full cost of this program. And because Norman Public Schools had security of their own before the SRO program that they were paying for, I'm not sure how many officers they had, I think, four, five, or six, maybe, at both Norman High and Norman North. But I had always been under the impression that this program is a joint partnership 50/50. And during the UNP TIF discussions, we talked pretty heavily about how to make MPS whole, because by ending the TIF increment, it would impact the federal or the state funding to MPS, in their opinion. So I'm not sure if Anthony's, if he is on the call with us right now, if he might want to talk a little bit about that from the finance standpoint. Because I know in 2014 and 15, the budget outlook then did not look great. And it was, there was some anticipation that the general fund might have to help the PSST out. I don't, we didn't anticipate that it would be this bad, but is Anthony with us right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm not sure what the specific question is. When when the 2019 amendment to the TIF project plan was passed, part of what was included in that new project plan was funding for the school district's participation in newly built or to be built indoor aquatic center. So basically, there was, there'll be TIF funds for the school district to pay to the operator of the aquatic center so that the swim team from Norman High and Norman North can utilize that facility. And that was our way of making them whole for the for the loss of their property tax apportionment.
If I recall, that that cost was about the same as what they were going to be losing by the TIF increment ending was about what it would cost them to, for their half of these remaining positions in the SRO programs, what I've always been under the impression of, was that they weren't going to be able to do that.
And if that was the case, that would be a coincidence. I, you know, I believe it was $375,000, and that was totally related to the amount of their lost state equalization funds.
Okay. I just want to be clear about that part because it was a little unclear about it, but I had always just, on my recollection of the past, been under the impression that the city was not, we were not going to be in a position where we could afford to pay for the whole program. And many of us felt that it is the public school system's security and that they should be intimately involved in running it and paying for it. So that's kind of my thoughts on it is, I don't know that we can afford to pay for the whole thing without their help. I don't know if they have to pay 50/50 something. That's all. Thanks.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. So a couple of questions. One is, what happens if we don't have the funds to do this match? I mean, do we lose, like, we have it in year one, but we don't have it in year two. We have it in year three, but not two. I mean, what, I mean, I'm really concerned about what the next year is going to bring us. So what happens if we don't have the matching dollars? We just lose those dollars? And then I would be concerned about taking this for a three-year program, hiring on positions that I'm not seeing a light at the end of the tunnel. Maybe that's my short-sightedness, but I don't think year four is going to be magical, or maybe I'm wrong. So Anthony, I don't know who needs to answer that, but.
The the grant requirements for matching funds and then the takeover of the full cost of those additional positions is clear in the grant. As far as our ability to fund it, that would be, you know, up to council's appropriation decisions in each budget year. But we would be in violation of the grant contract if we didn't fund those things in each of those four years.
Okay. And I have other questions about the SRO program, Chief Foster. I've always liked this program. I've appreciated it, but I know that we spent a pretty significant amount of time in the budget meeting with citizens telling us the program was not quite the same experience for them as it had was maybe for my kids. So what are we doing to address those concerns?
I think you heard from a few people, and we could counter those arguments, but we cannot talk about juvenile affairs in these incidents. You know, we have video and different things of the instances that was discussed, but we're not able to give you that side of it or show you that video to see what actually happened on those incidents. I think we do an outstanding job, and I think the majority of people like us in the schools. I think you heard from a small minority that was having issues. I believe the Professional Teachers Association, I believe I heard from them, that they did a poll, maybe statewide, 96% of the teachers they polled want SROs in the schools. So I think we're doing a good job the way it is.
So what I'm hearing you say, and this is concerning to me, is that those see, I don't want to say this. No change, just this program is great. There's no change. So I have concerns about that because I'm sorry that many people don't show up to a a meeting, a budget meeting for 12 hours and voice those kinds of concern without there being some validity there. So I would like to see some. I don't know what that looks like, and like I said, for those people that I'm about to get blasted by, I like the program. I've enjoyed the program. My kids thrived in that program. My kids had a great time. They enjoy, they love the officers. And many of the people I know in the community appreciate those officers. I just want to make sure that we are doing something significant to address the concerns that were voiced to us that night in a 12-hour meeting. And I'll just leave that as a hanging chat on the table for you, but you need to take care of that.
And Councilmember Beerman.
I was asking if everyone could hear me okay, and I was not unmuted. Can everyone hear me okay if I don't hold my microphone up to my mouth? Awesome, because I prefer not to do that. Apologize for my voice. My boy, my voice has apparently quit on me. I have worked it too hard in the last week, and it is not having fun anymore. However, I did, this might be a question for Catherine Walker. I pulled up the PSS2 ordinance, and it says in there, in the proposition that this is a jointly funded School Resource Officer Program with participating public school systems. When we say things like jointly funded, what does that mean?
That they'll be sharing in the funding, and so I've got the the current contract pulled up. And the first year, I believe it was, let's see, maybe July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, the school paid almost $427,000. The contract was amended in July of 2017, and that amount increased to $648,690 a year. And it's my understanding, that's the arrangement now, and that's what the school district is paying on an annual basis for those officers. So it is a shared cost.
What percentage of the cost? What percentage of the cost of the SRO program is Norman Public Schools paying right now?
Anthony can't see me looking at him, but I'm looking at him because he'll have that information.
Anthony, did you hear the question? Or Kevin, do you know the, the full cost of the program each year?
I'm, I'm trying to find the answer.
Okay, because that's, and while, while Anthony looks for that, I will say that that's, that's really my concern, too, is that this was put to voters as a jointly funded program. And while we may not necessarily be doing it on the timeline that we thought back in 2014, we were supposed to have all thirteen officers by, like, the end of the second year, which obviously we're way past the end of the second year. However, it says in here jointly funded, and I share the concerns of a lot of my fellow council members about, you know, maybe, maybe we can do this in years one through three, but how do we fund it in years four through infinity? Especially if we're not getting a sense from Norman Public Schools that right now they are willing to take on their half. Their, their budget woes are also our budget woes. We're all experiencing the same disruptions right now. And I think it's very possible, in fact, heading towards likely, that we're not going to have a normal school year this year. So while Anthony continues to look for that, what is the timeline by which we need to make a decision about this grant? Do we have a?
We, we have forty-five days from the time we were notified on the 29th, so mid-August.
Okay, so we do have a little bit more time to kind of see how, how our case trends look, what Norman Public Schools ends up deciding. But I do, I do really have concerns about us taking on the full funding for this program, since that's A, not what voters voted on, and B, not what our contractual agreements have been over the last few years, and C, we don't even know what this upcoming school year is going to look like. But I would like to know kind of what the full cost of the SRO program is and what Norman Public Schools has historically in the last few years been paying in for, for their share.
Mayor Clark, we do have, Dr. Nick was not able to join us this evening, but Justin Milner is on the call with us. I don't know if Justin, if you have a comment for, on behalf of Norman Public Schools. If you do, just go ahead and unmute your mic, because I'm trying to find you. He was having some connectivity issues, but.
Well, in the meantime, Anthony, while you're also looking, I'd like to know if the PSST has the funding to support this program, or would this be something that's supplemented through the general?
Okay, so that question I can't answer. Any additional cost related to the public safety sales tax is an additional cost to the general fund.
That would be even though these, these positions were intended to be funded through the PSST, at this time, it does not have the funding to support these additional?
That's correct. For the last several fiscal years, the, the general fund has subsidized the public safety sales tax fund. And council had a long discussion about that a few years ago.
When that was done on the public safety sales tax one, I, the way I remember it back in 2008, is there are several people that came forward saying, you don't pass a temporary tax to fund permanent positions of personnel. And I thought the answer back then that they got from council was by the time that temporary ended, they will have absorbed those first forty-one police officers into the general fund by the, when the temporary tax would have went away. So the way I would look at it is those first forty-one officers should be being paid out of the general fund already, and the additional from PSSA two is what should be being paid out of PSST.
Okay, Justin, I'm going to try to unmute you one more time, see if it works. Okay, can you, can you hear me, Justin?
Well, with all due respect for Councilor Beerman's question, let's let Mr. Francisco work on that. We do only have twenty-five minutes, and I know there are more questions. So I think, I know I can count on Councilor Beerman to not let that get, go unanswered. So let's continue on.
I will say that this is an imprecise answer, but the total cost of the Police Department Public Safety Sales Tax last fiscal year was, was six million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that's not just for SROs, that's for the whole PSST program.
Okay.
I know you'll find me that, I'm patient, I'll wait.
Looks like Councilmember Holman has his hand up again.
Thank you. Yeah, I, maybe in 2008, before the recession, the council then may have thought the general fund would be in a position at some point in the next decade to take over that type of positions. But I know in 2014, when we passed PSS2, PSST2, we did not anticipate that the general fund would be able to absorb all of those positions by now. We didn't anticipate the PSST two or permanent would have to be subsidized by the general fund for this long. We didn't really anticipate there would be such a decline in sales tax revenue just nationwide in changing sales, changing retail habits, buying online, online sales taxes, Anthony's talked about many times, does not generate nearly the same amount of sales tax revenue as brick and mortar businesses do. And so the loss of brick and mortar businesses is not being made up for by the gain in online sales tax. So that, that is definitely my biggest concern currently is that the PSST is not sustainable right now. It's having to be subsidized by over a million dollars this year by the general fund, which is already extremely stressed out. Even before COVID-19, the general fund was having some really serious problems. And so although, or given that, you know, currently the PSST is a voter mandate, the SRO positions are a voter mandate. So I think we do have a responsibility to fill those positions at some point. I do feel pretty strongly, though, that those four remaining positions need to be a, a, a joint partnership between the City of Norman and Norman Public Schools to fund them. But I am concerned, as Kate, or as Councilmember Beerman mentioned about the out years after the grant runs out, what will we do then? Maybe public safety sales tax will be above water, above, above board in a couple of years, and it can, can absorb some of that. But I'm not anticipating that the general fund in the next couple of years will be able to absorb any of it, any further, really. But until, or unless voters go to the polls and tell the city differently when it comes to the PSST, we do have to figure out a way to get those positions filled until, like I said, until we're told otherwise. So what do we have, a month, a month to figure this out, if we can accept this grant or not? I think we need to have some conversations with our partners at MPS and, and see where we're at. Thanks.
I'm clerk. May I jump in and point out, I was surprised Councilman Holman didn't give us a quick history lesson. The reason why we vote on the raising of utilities or creation of utilities is because we had a grant back in the, what, seventies that helped us provide for a lot of police officers. And when the grant money ran out, they hiked up the water rates to pay for those, those positions that had been created. And I certainly do not want to find us in a position like that again. I have two questions. Number one, would these officers be hired knowing that after three years, there may not be funding to continue? And I think that needs to be very well acknowledged if, if we end up accepting this grant. And then number two, does the grant have the flexibility where we could kind of forego accepting it, like, accept it, but say we're going to actually accept the funds next year? Because it seems crazy to accept a position for in-school when we don't know what that looks like, and it would seem almost like a waste, again, knowing the uncertainty of our budget going forward. So does the grant have the flexibility? And would the positions be hired knowing that after three years, we cannot guarantee that that would be a position that would remain?
Would you like for me to get that, Chief?
Yes.
Okay. The, the, the commitment to keep the officers is for a total of four years, because we have to keep them for the twelve months after the grant actually ends as well. Would they be hired with that knowledge? I would assume that, yes, they would. My experience is also, however, that they, if people are furloughed or a reduction enforced, then the, the contract would actually govern who the actual people are selected to be reduced. So I'm not sure that the individuals hired using this grant money would actually be the ones that would be terminated. But that's a decision probably made with legal and, and city administration and that stuff. But I would assume that, yes, just like other hiring grants, people are hired in the full knowledge that this is a grant, and it's got a four-year period, and depending on the finances of the city depends on whether or not those positions stay budgeted after that. And your second question was, do we have the flexibility within the grant to accept the grant, but then not, not start basically fulfilling the grant? I would have to try to contact the cops office to see what the flexibility is. My understanding is that the thirty-six-month or three-year clock starts October 1st of this year.
That's just unfortunate because of the situation that's completely out of everyone's control. I just hate to, to waste that year. So if, if you would, would do me a favor and just inquire about that, because I can imagine that we're not the only person getting this grant. And if we're not, we're certainly not the only ones in the exact same situation. So they may have already received that question, even deferring it till February 1. What, you know, I'm very optimistic for progress later in the fall, but even more so in the spring. So any flexibility they could give us in light of a pandemic would certainly be appreciated.
And I think.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Just another thing, I do feel the need to, to kind of make this, is that when we hire an officer, from the time we hire an officer, it's going to be a minimum of twelve, excuse me, of nine to ten months, just to get them from initial hire until they're able to perform out on the street. So we're talking about a delayed timeframe.
Anyways.
You know, yeah, October 1st, I can't put somebody in the schools. Well, actually, what we'd have to do, and it'd be a chief decision, to take a, an existing officer and put them in the schools and use these positions to backfill. But that's a chief's decision. But I can't hire a person October 1st and put them in the schools on October 1st. It'll be at least nine months, if not a year.
When is the next academy?
That's a chief question. We, we've been in a hiring freeze, so we do not have an academy scheduled. I'd like to run one as soon as possible, or at least get it going. The reason, we was in a hiring freeze, we'd normally start recruiting back in January, and it was, you know, it's a five-to-six-month process, and we'd have an academy starting in August sometime. We didn't do that because we sort of on a freeze for our positions, so I couldn't start recruiting and telling people, yeah, I think we might be able to have one here, when we may not have had positions at all. So we've just been in a freeze, but we will be getting down low enough there, I really need to have an academy soon to, or at least start recruiting for an academy.
Thank you. Councilman Foreman.
Hi, I just had a quick question. So say we started the program, and then we couldn't keep funding it after the first year for some reason, is there any penalty where we would have to pay them back for the money given or anything like that?
I think that's a fair question. I don't know the technicalities of that. I, I don't know the answer to that. I'd be speculating.
We will find out, though.
Then Councilmember Beerman.
I just had one quick question for Catherine Walker. I think this is something that I like hammering home over and over and over again. Can you remind me and everyone here in the PSST2 ordinance, it was actually in the PSSP1 ordinance as well, the intent of the language included that says, "to the extent feasible from the revenues generated hereby for the purposes of..." Why do we include things like "to the extent feasible" in our ballot language and in our ordinances?
I think there was some recognition at that time that sales tax revenues are somewhat volatile, and so there was language in both PSSP1 and PSSP2, as you said, that said, "we're going to do these things to the extent the PSST revenues are feasible."
And so I think that's something important for us all to keep in mind as we look at continuing and increasing general fund subsidies, that the city very rarely and wisely does not put themselves in the position of being boxed in one hundred percent on all sides and committing to something that despite any circumstances that might arise, that we have to fund things at the exact level and in the exact way that we say we're going to. There's always going to be some flexibility built into these ordinances and built into this ballot language for these exact reasons, because we can't always see what the future is going to hold. And so I think that's just important for us to keep in mind when we look at things like the general fund subsidy to the PSST that has been continuing to grow, that we build in flexibility. This is not an iron one hundred percent concrete ordinance that come whatever may, this is what's going to be funded. So I think that's also important for us to keep in mind as we weigh questions like this and weigh whether or not we want to continue subsidizing the PSST2 at the level that we are and continuing into the future. That's all.
Councilmember Pratram.
Thank you. Okay, the, what elements are left other than these four officers in the PSST program that have not been funded yet?
For our side, I believe it's these four SROs, and I think two more dispatchers.
That's correct. Of course, there's also the additional capital, critical capital needs that have not been done yet.
Fire station. Right, but on the police side or just on the, on the fire side?
Well, the, the EOC, Emergency Communication Center, you might say, is on the police side. It's, it's really to serve all functions, but.
Okay. And then that's part of the bond that we're asking voters to supplement. Okay, and, and then this is kind of a two-part. I was looking through folders. I don't see the MOU or any paperwork about the grant offer. Can we get the, have a look at those? Can those be sent to our folders?
Maybe it should be attached to your agenda in your, in, on your iPad. Now, I'll double check if it's not, make sure it gets pushed over there, but.
Please, thank you. And then I know, I, I agree with Kate. I'd like to know what the city's currently spending on the SRO program, and I would really like to hear from Mr. Milner if we can get his mic working as to what his understanding is for MPS's side and what their thoughts are, even with the, in light of the COVID, because I think that might, that mayor, mayor's idea of being able to get as much out of that first year, as much out of the program money as we could, it might be best to wait until February to get the most out of our money. I mean, it, but if we can't press pause with them, in other words, accept the grant, but don't make the hire. I mean, I really do want to hear, I, I appreciate if you would call them and find out, you know, what the details are on that.
Okay, Justin has rejoined us. I'm going to see if he actually has a good signal now. So Justin, I've unmuted you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As far as, what was the specific question for MPS? Our goal right now is, with regards to returning to school, as reported at our board meeting this evening, to have options for our families. But one of those options is to have a face-to-face, unless we get, receive guidance, or as we see numbers continue to take a downturn, that would change that. So. So our goal is to have a face-to-face situation. I know one of the earlier questions with regards to SROs in the spring, we maintained our responsibility for paying our share of that contract while the SROs were redeployed to the, to the community while school was at, at a session and we were quarantined. Are there other questions?
I believe the other one, Justin, would be if you know what the school's position would be on co-funding the newer officers that would be hired with this grant.
We haven't had a conversation with regards to co-funding officers with regards to the grant. I know there was some earlier conversations with regards to interpretation of 50/50. What I believe the original intent was, was the amount that we were spending on our current SROs in the 14, 15 school year would be the amount applied, which was I think that 450,000 original number. It has, we've seen the increases to 600,000 and probably over that with overtime. And that's the last conversation that we've had with regards to that. There has been that interpretation of 50/50, but it jointly share of cost was, you know, we certainly feel like we have shared in that cost of the officers. So they'll need to be, with regards to if there's the intent of paying a 50/50 portion for the grant, we would need to have more discussion with regards to that.
Okay. Mayor not seeing any other hands raised unless, let me double check one more time. No, I'm not seeing anything else.
Thank you. Hopefully we can end here in a minute and give everyone a chance to stretch their legs before we begin the full council meeting. It sounds like for our next action items, we would like to know from the federal government if there's any flexibility given a, a start point with COVID-19 going on. I, I understand what you had said about the academy and all of that, but again, I, I would like to see what the flexibility is there. It also sounds like we do need to have conversations with Norman Public Schools about how that our half of it will be split between the two of us, if at all. And then I, those were the two things that I saw. Please let me know if I missed anything. Councilman Petron, I did see your hand go up.
Well, Anthony, we're waiting on Anthony to give us the budget answer. How much we're currently spending on this route.
And if we don't have that tonight, that will hopefully be in a, an update as well.
Yeah, and again, it's a, I could tell you how much is budgeted. I just, I thought the question though was about how mu, how much was spent and that's, that's a different and a harder to obtain number.
The other question Councilmember Petron had was what penalties, if any, are there if we couldn't continue after the first year?
Yes, excellent. And as Councilman Reforman added, will we have to pay it back? Is there a penalty? Not just can we get out of it, but is there a penalty? Thank you for that.
We can also look into, i- if it doesn't work out of if this might, refusing this would hurt us applying next year to going forward, see how it does.
I'm hopeful it's like grad school admissions or you can defer a year. Fingers crossed, but who knows? I appreciate you looking into that. And I think we, we want to make sure we have the correct numbers on this program, so I don't want to force Anthony to throw stuff at us and then have to correct it later, especially because we're live. So let's give him time to do that appropriately. And unless there's any other questions, let's take again, four minutes to stretch your legs, get a drink of water, whatever we need to do before the meeting begins. Please turn off your cameras and your microphones. Thank you.
Mayor Clark, we are all ready, we're here and ready to go.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of July 14th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Petron.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. All right, will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three, approval of the City Council Study Session Minutes of February 18th, 2020, City Council Conference Minutes of February 25th, 2020, and City Council Special Session Minutes of June 16th, 2020. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
No moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Perry.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item four, Resolution 2021-13, commending and extending recognition to the Norman Area Land Conservancy Incorporated in their 20th anniversary year. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
No moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt or reject the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Perry.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron. Councilmember Petron.
Oh, aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, commending and extending recognition to the Norman Area Land Conservancy Incorporated in their 20th anniversary year. Whereas the Norman Area Land Conservancy Incorporated, NALC, was incorporated and filed with the Oklahoma Secretary of State on February 17th, 2000 by J. Lee Rogers, Harold Heiple, and Lynthe Westner. And whereas, NALC Incorporated is a not-for-profit corporation that enters into private-public partnerships with the City of Norman, U.S. Department of Agricultural Natural Resources Conservation Service, and private landowners in the form of conservation easements to conserve, enhance, and protect the rural and urban natural environments in and around the city of Norman. And whereas, the conservation easements in NALC's trust help to further the goals of the City of Norman's Greenway Plan to establish open spaces and a trail system throughout Norman. And whereas, the conservation easements in NALC's trust help protect floodplains and waterways from urban development. And whereas, through its public-private partnerships, NALC has acquired five conservation easements totaling approximately 537 acres within the city limits of Norman and two additional easements in the surrounding area totaling 361 acres. And whereas, the city is grateful for the ongoing partnership with the NALC and the commitment of the Norman-related families, Coleman's, Ward's, Hoover's and Potts, who entered into conservation easements to preserve and protect the important natural features and sensitive environmental areas on their properties within the city limits of Norman. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the mayor and city council of the City of Norman commend and recognize Norman Area Land Conservancy Incorporated in their 20th anniversary year. And I believe that we have Lynthe Westner here to make a few comments on behalf of this proclamation.
Mayor Clark, I'm happy to be here on behalf of our Board of Directors to accept this resolution and we appreciate you remembering that we are a part of the city. We have enjoyed much, very good relationships with the city and we hope that there in the future, we'll be able to do more conservation easements in conjunction with the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you've done. We now move on to item five, the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine, routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through 44 in the consent docket.
No moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items six through 44 on the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Perry.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item six, ordinance 1920-55 upon first reading, amending the planned unit development approved in ordinance 0203-2 amended by 0506-9, replaced by 0607-13, and amended by 1415-45, 1516-24, 1819-12, and 1819-37 to amend the setbacks and landscaping requirements to allow construction of an office complex for two- for 2.7857 acres of property on the east side of 24th Avenue Northwest and north of Corporate Center Drive. Item seven, ordinance 1920-56 upon first reading, amending Chapter 23 and Chapter 22 of the City Code providing fees and guidelines for short-term rentals. Item eight, ordinance 1920-57 upon first reading, rezoning requests from O1 Office Institutional District to PUD Planned Unit Development for approximately 29.6 acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of State Highway 9 and 24th Avenue Southeast. Item nine, ordinance 1920-61 upon first reading, requesting special use for one and only one of the specific uses permitted in the M1 Restricted Industrial District, specifically G Medical Marijuana Processor. Any tier except that Tier 1 and Tier 2 would not be allowed to have onsite sales as allowed by state law in the A2 Rural Agricultural District for property located at 4520 East Franklin Road. Item 10, mayor's appointments of Helen Green to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Carla Kimberling, Jody Foot, and Tim Malden to the Library Board, Amelia Torres and Elizabeth Pierce to the Norman Election Commission, James Chapel to the Norman Regional Hospital Authority, Jared Garner and Jim Costello to the Public Safety Oversight Committee, and Tori Tetter-Loughlin and Will Spain to the Tree Board. Congratulations to all of you. Item 11, mayor's appointment of Jan Knott to the Central Oklahoma Master Conservancy District and adoption of Resolution 2021-19. Congratulations to you as well. Item 12, bid for the purchase of ferric sulfate for the water treatment facility. Item 13, bid for the purchase of liquid ammonium sulfate for the water treatment facility. Item 14, bid for the purchase of fluorosilic acid for the water treatment facility. Item 15, acceptance of requests for proposal and approval of contract and bonds with Cavens Construction Group, LLC in the amount of $234,328 for the Rotary Park restroom construction project and adoption of a resolution granting tax-exempt status. Item 16, bid, contract, and bonds with Arrowhead Industries, Incorporated in the amount of $155,839. Change order number one, decreasing the contract amount by $9,680 for a revised contract amount of $146,159 for the water treatment plant wet laboratory remodel project. Item 17, bid, contract, and bonds with First Water Contracting, LLC in the amount of $1,258,743 for the urban asphalt pavement project, FYE 2021 Locations, and adoption of a resolution granting tax-exempt status. Item 18, bid, contract, and bonds with Garni Companies, Incorporated in the amount of $1,978,875 for the Robinson Waterline Replacement Project Phase III. Item 19, bid, contract, and bonds with RDNJ LLC doing business as ATEC Paving in the amount of $1,183,072.50 for the urban concrete pavement project, FYE 2021 Locations, and adoption of a resolution granting tax-exempt status. Item 20, bid, contract, and bonds with Rudy Construction Company in the amount of $73,422.50 for the alley reconstruction project, Macy Street to Emmerlin Street, and adoption of a resolution granting tax-exempt status. Item 21, final plot for Sooner Mall, a replot of Lot 1, Block 1, amended plot of Sooner Fashion Mall Edition north of West Main Street between I-35 Rightofway and 36th Avenue Northwest. Item 22, conveyance of title by Quick Claim deed to Independent School District Number 29 for property known as the Norman High School Gymnasium located at 911 West Main Street. Item 23, payment of the FYE 2021 dues assessment in the amount of $65,166 to the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, or ACOG, for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Item 24, payment of FYE 2021 dues assessment in the amount of $65,000 to the Oklahoma Municipal League for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Item 25, acceptance of donation in the amount of $60,000 from an anonymous donor for the purchase of protective masks and budget appropriation. Item 26, submission of an application by the City of Norman to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce in the amount of $145,657 for Emergency Solutions Grant, CR 2020. Item 27, acceptance of certified local governments' grant funding in the amount of $19,459 to be used for the development and support of local historic programs from Oklahoma Historic Society, State Historic Preservation Office, and approval of contract 2021-14. Item 28, special claim submitted by Kira Seelig in the total amount of $4,285 for medical expenses, travel expenses, and pain and suffering that occurred as a result of a collision with a police vehicle on November 18th, 2019 at the East Main Street Roundabout. Item 29, final acceptance and final payment of the contract with CTEX Construction Services, LLC, A&amp;M Construction and Utilities, Incorporated, for the water treatment plant backwash tower resurfacing project. Item 30, change order number one to contract 1920-78 with EMC Services, LLC, increasing the contract amount by $14,661.85 for a revised contract amount of $93,238.85 for the Frank and Hubert Drainage Improvement Project, file acceptance of the project, and budget transfer between project accounts. Item 31, change order number one to contract 1920-123 with Jordan Contractors, Incorporated, increasing contract by $92,329 for a revised amount of $462,434 and adding 30 calendar days to the contract for the FYE 2017 Sewer Maintenance Project Phase II. Item 32, contract with the Oklahoma Department of Agricultural Food and Forestry Wildlife Services Division in the amount of $20,000 for control of aquatic rodents effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Item 33, contract with the Board of Cleveland County Commissioners for a cooperative interlocal agreement for the maintenance, construction, and repair of sectioned line roads within the city of Norman from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Item 34, contract with Hidalgo Trading, LLC in the amount of $388,500 for the purchase of real property located at 333 Bratcher Minor Road, plus closing costs to be determined prior to closing for the water reclamation facility and sanitation facilities and acceptance of an easement. Item 35, contract with Nelson Nygard Consulting Associates, Incorporated, to provide professional consultant services in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for updating the transit long-range plan and to perform associated tasks. Item 36, contract with the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department and the Board of County Commissioners, excuse me. Pardon me. And the Board of County Commissioners of Cleveland County to provide for the incarceration of city prisoners in the Cleveland County Jail facility at a cost of $52 per day per prisoner. Item 37, contract with Center for Children and Families, Incorporated, in the amount of $120,000 for use in the Boys and Girls Club of Norman. Item 38, contract with Benham Engineering, LLC in the amount of $30,000 for design, bidding, construction, administration services, and inspection for the Cascade Water Towering Resurfacing Project. Item 39, contract with Connor Energy Holdings, LLC in the amount of $30,000 to provide design, bidding, and construction administration services for a 30-kilowatt net metered rooftop solar installation. Item 40, contract with the Alternative Dispute Resolution System of the State of Oklahoma for the purpose of certifying Norman's dispute mediation program, beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. Item 41, contract with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and the U.S. Geological Survey in the amount of $5,900 to provide for Canadian River water quality and water quantity monitoring through June 30, 2021. Item 42, Resolution 2021-11, authorizing joint petition settlement of the claim filed by Frank Crowley under Oklahoma Workers' Compensation Statutes for Workers' Compensation Commission Case 2019-07594Y in the amount of $20,864.69. Item 43, Resolution 2021-12, approving the June 28, 2018 waiting-voting amendment to the agreement creating the 911 Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. Item 44, Resolution 2021-18, reaffirming the House Rules Code of Conduct adopted in 2005 and adopting additional rules for meetings held by video conference. I need a motion to approve or reject the Consent Docket.
So moved. Second.
I'd like to recognize Chief Travis King to make comments about the mask item on item 25.
Chief, just a moment, Chief King, you're rea- I think we're both doing it.
There we go.
There you go.
I think, I think we're ping-ponging it, Brenda.
I think so. Sorry about that.
That's okay. My fault. Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to do this. So yes, recently, the city received an anonymous donation, and that's what is being approved tonight for $60,000 for the purchase of 100,000 masks. The plan is to distribute these across our city at our fire stations. Our plan is to put them at Station 1, Station 5, Station 8, and Station 9, and that handles both east, west, and central locations where folks can come and get a mask if they need one. So that is our plan. We hope to have the masks ready for distribution by tomorrow. We're being told they will arrive tomorrow. And we are working with our Chief Communications Officer, Annalise Meyer. We'll, we will give the details on the station addresses and the times they will be available for pickup and how to approach the station and get those in a safe manner. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief King. I assume that it will be on not only the website, the city's website, but also sent out through Norman News and on our city's social media, correct?
That is absolutely correct. We'll also put it on our Fire Department Facebook page and definitely get this publicized in all ways that we're aware of.
Wonderful. I just want to share my appreciation to this donor. We know that this mask ordinance will make a difference in our battle against COVID-19. We also know masks cost money, and so this will help our businesses as well as our residents in making sure that we are all keeping each other safe.
Well said, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Clark, I believe Councilmember Patron has a statement.
It's not a statement. I was just wondering, how many masks does $60,000 get us? And I'm also excited to get some of those up the mall.
Yes, ma'am. So with the $60,000 donation, we'll be able to purchase 100,000 masks.
Awesome. Thank you. I would now like to recognize Mr. Sean O'Leary to make a brief presentation on item 35.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to hand off to Taylor Johnson to make those comments and offer a few slides. We appreciate the chance to speak to the long-range planning study on item 35. We also want to take a moment to give some updates on what has been a very successful year. We're really proud of the, our first year in the transit business, and Taylor will take it from there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Hopefully, everybody can hear me, and I just started sharing my screen, so hopefully you can see the PowerPoint presentation as well. I'm not sure if it's coming through as the presentation viewer.
We can see it.
Okay. So like Sean said, just want to make sure, we want to go through and highlight a few of fiscal year 2020. The good that came through our first year as a transit system. We felt like it was a very good year. And just highlight a few of the next steps in FY 2021. So in FY 2020, we did a route adjustment to accommodate the new central library. We're very proud of that. We were able to do that shortly after the grand opening and able to get the public there to take care, or to access those services. We also updated the pair of transit customer lists to ensure that is current, and that was a major undertaking for our contractor, Embark, to take over the list that we inherited and to really come through and make sure that it was current with who was still living in Norman and who was still using the service. With 72% voter approval, we, there was a passage of an eighth of a cent public transit sales tax on November 12. I'm very proud of the education campaign that we did with the Communications Officer and with other staff to make sure that voters were informed of that and to see that voters approved of that, the first standalone transit tax measure in the state to be approved. And then we secured the FTA grant that's allocated to the Norman UZA, or Urbanized Area, of approximately $2 million per year. And we're working on getting the, this year's FY 21 grant allocated and start drawing down those funds as well. And then we began capital vehicle replacement in FY 2020 using combinations of city funds and an ACOG grant that we got for a 35-foot CNG bus. Then one more slide on 2020. We began making steps to improve the technology and safety on buses, so that's the automatic vehicle locator or GPS system, the automatic passenger counter, so we have accurate ridership and data reporting, on-time performance. And then for safety, we're looking into and installing driver barriers for people that come in close contact, getting on and off the bus, to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. And also looking into installing and upgrading our security cameras on our buses. We submitted competitive grant applications for a battery electric bus, a vehicle wash facility, and CNG vehicle replacements. We felt like this was important to do and to try to realize some of those funds that are out there. As many council members and the mayor knows, we designed and funded a 8.1 million maintenance operations facility. We're getting pretty close to the bidding that out. And we're very excited about having our own home here in the city for transit and for the maintenance of those buses. We began exploring a location and earmarked funding for the new downtown Norman City Transit Transfer Center. Very excited about that location. This will be kind of flushed out in the work that is to be done by the consultant for the long-range plan, but we're very excited that we started that conversation in 2020. And then finally, I just want to wrap all of 2020 up with that last bullet. We successfully operated and maintained the public transit system in its first year with no break in service. So I feel like city council and staff should be commended for that. It's not easy to take over a program, no less a $5 million program, and make sure it's funded and that it makes it through its first year. So thank you for that. I'm going to quickly go through 2021 next steps. So item 35 speaks directly to this first bullet point. So we'll work with consultants to perform outreach and other associated tasks to update the transit long-range plan. And as approved with the Embark FYE 2021 contract, 1921-37, we're planning on beginning Saturday service on August 15. We're very excited that this will include OU Home Game Days, which was not provided in the past. That'll probably look like a temporary bus hub off of campus if the OU Home Games are anything like in the past, but we're still monitoring what those will look like, and we'll make sure the public knows what the service will look like on those game days. And then consolidating the commuter routes, Norman's 124 and Embark OKC's 24 route into one route under the Embark OKC effective August 10. And this will create some operational efficiencies and decrease some customer confusion by just having one operator provide this service and make sure that that one house is responsible for that. And then completing the updates of the transit technology and safety items that I mentioned earlier. And we're hoping that during this fiscal year, we'll have the mobile app for both Apple and Android back up and running for passengers. Then finally, we're looking at procuring additional transit vehicles using the available federal funding that we have access to. And also, we're looking to complete the construction of the operations and maintenance facility and transition from the OU facility. Like I said earlier, very excited about having a home at the city for transit. As I mentioned earlier, formally award the FYE 2021 FTA grant allocation and draw down those funds throughout the year. And then as necessary and as appropriate, apply for the competitive grant funding that comes out throughout the year for capital and other appropriate projects. And then finally, just another plan and program that we have to submit to as a part of getting those federal dollars. We need to complete our first national transit database report, which is all-encompassing of our data on what we did for fiscal year and the operations of a transit system. So with that, I just want to thank you, City Council and the mayor, for supporting public transit here in our city, both past council members and present just over the past year. And I look forward to another successful year in FY 2021. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And again, I just want to thank you for all of your hard work with a brand-new system and the first to hold that role. You and Mr. O'Leary really are defining what public transit looks like in our city. And I'm grateful to have you both at the- and I'm grateful to have you both at the helm.
Thank you.
We have a couple of questions, Mayor, from Councilmember Beerman.
Taylor, or maybe this is for Sean. My first question is, what are we doing to address the campus routes that still have a lot of non-student Norman residents relying on it? They've been without it since mid-March, and it's been very, very difficult for them to handle that through the spring and especially now that the weather is getting even hotter, even if we're not able to do anything about it for the remainder of this, of this kind of situation where OU is not in operation? What contingency plans, I'm so sorry. What contingency plans have we put in place in case OU ends up shutting down early again? Or, you know, I really hate leaving these Norman residents who happen to live near campus in one of these campus routes be stranded without available bus service?
Great question. Taylor, you want to tackle that one?
Great question, like Sean said. So we'll be discussing that with CART over the next couple of months on what that'll look like. We really need to have a conversation on if either transit system really needs additional assistance or help, what does that look like? And we're thankful that during this period that the transfer center is still located on campus, so those passengers can still, you know, access the routes that we're running a little bit without having to go too far. But we'll definitely be looking into that over the next couple of months, council member.
I appreciate that, and I know particularly our disabled residents who live in those areas will be glad to hear that you're working on it. It's been very difficult for them.
Yeah. And on that comment, I'd just like to say that our paratransit service is still serving that area. So those customers that are eligible for that service and are still using it are still able to access it.
And of course, I don't know, I don't know their particular circumstances, but I know that those who are, use the regular bus would prefer to, you know, maintain the bandwidth of the paratransit service for those who are even less mobile than they are. But I do appreciate knowing that. My second question is, I saw that there was a significant amount of federal funding that has made its way to the state of Oklahoma for transit systems to particularly address COVID. Do we have any update on whether or not Embark is receiving any of that and whether or not any of, we're going to see the impact of any of that here in Norman?
Another great question. We were visiting with the city manager last evening. There was a newspaper article that talked to the kind of quote or remember, that particular article was kind of referencing rural allocations, not so much urban. We have received $5.1 million in CARES Act funding, and as you know, our situation is unique. We've chosen to use those funds on our transit maintenance facility. Embark has received their share of funding and actually learned recently they're going to use that funding over a two-year period to make up for the loss in revenue that they're experiencing from their loss in ridership and fare. So each transit agency, it appears, is sort of handling it differently. But we do think the 5.1 million is the full extent of what we will receive unless Congress passes the new bill.
Okay, great. And then I do have, I do have one last small question. I saw that we were-
Councilmember Beerman, they are having difficulty hearing you. Could you go ahead and hold your microphone up? I'm sorry.
Sorry. I know, and my vocal cords continue to fail me. So my last question is, I saw that we were, that we were looking at possibly getting some new buses in the coming year. I remember, I wish I could remember exactly who it was to give credit where credit is due, but at least one council member in our past discussions about how to wrap or decorate these buses talked about encouraging local artists to submit designs to maybe put at some, somewhere on the buses. Maybe it's the back, maybe it's the sides. I really love this idea, and I'd like to see us pursue that. You know, we have a thriving arts community here. We have tons of murals everywhere. We're continuing to invest in public art, and I don't think our buses should be exempt from that. So just wanted to keep that out there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman did have his hand up, and I've lost him.
I'm still here.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Holman.
I appreciate Councilmember Beerman bringing up the campus routes because several evidence in Ward 7 are impacted by OU not running the campus routes right now. So I would like to see us maybe think about a temporary stop that we could set up, maybe at Reeves Park or at the OU Police Station. I'm not sure. This, what I'm thinking about specifically is the Emerald Greens Apartments and the Creyette Lee, because Emerald Greens specifically has a lot of low-income folks that live there. Many of them aren't disabled, so I don't know that they would qualify for the paratransit service, but definitely a lot of folks that live in Immortals do not have a car, for sure. And it's, you know, way out kind of, I mean, it's an apartment complex. It's kind of out in the middle of nowhere, sort of. There's nothing else around it but OU buildings and the Weather Center and, you know, Lloyd Noble Center and stuff. So I know a lot of people live there, are not students and don't have vehicles. And it's a mile walk from there to the Duck Pines, to the transfer, to the current bus. So it's probably less of a walk to the nearest stop, but if they were to walk from Emerald Greens to the, to the current Brook Street Station, it'd be about a mile walk. So I would like for us to look at either our Reeves Park Center, our building that we have there on the corner, something like that, maybe a temporary stop. We could, if OU is not going to resume campus routes, or a backup plan for when OU maybe closes up again and doesn't have the routes running. So I'd definitely like to see us have a conversation about that. And then the Saturday bus service, I'm very excited to see that on there because when, that was something that was cut by CART when OU was still in charge of the system along with the 30-minute service. And one of the things many of us talked about when we were promoting the sales tax vote was, right now, we're trying to get funding to maintain our current system so people that rely on it can continue relying on it. But we do want to restore the services that were cut and expand the system. And so I honestly didn't expect to be able to expand Saturday services soon. So I'd love, Taylor, if you might, talk a little bit more about the Saturday service decision. And some people might be, you know, even more surprised that we're doing it now, given everything we're going through with COVID and students aren't back yet. You know, right now, it looks like they might be coming back and school might, so I, you know, it's just, a lot's up in the air, I understand. But if you would maybe talk about that just a little bit further, Taylor.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Holman. When we're looking at the budget for the transit system, we saw that it wouldn't be out of the question to propose increasing the operations budget by a little bit to have the Saturday service come back. We know that, like you said, was something during the education campaign for the sales tax, we heard a lot from the community, and that was important to them. And we'll, we'll monitor the Saturday service as it ramps back up and be able to report that to CPNT on how it's doing. We're imagining it'll be very similar to how it was with cuts of 10:00 AM service to 7:00 PM and only Zone One paratransit, again, exactly how it was with OU and without the operation of the Route 20, the circulator out by the, out by the west side of town. And so I think, I hope I answered all your questions. If not, please let me know.
I want to mention, Councilor, if I may, I want to credit Taylor and our legal staff for doing a stellar job with negotiating that contract. We didn't get a chance to talk much about that. I think it was at your last council meeting when you approved the Embark contract for 2021, but it was embedded in that contract and it was acquired through that negotiation. So not only are we able to restore Saturday service, but you're doing it within your projected budget targets as well.
That's even better. Thank you so much, Sean. I appreciate that. So we are, I am planning to have CPT on Thursday, the 30th, I believe, is what I've been talking with Jane Hudson about. First time we've met since February, so I am pretty excited just to get an update on these, the ridership numbers, which we usually get every single month, but especially since we just took over the system, we really haven't been able to meet and discuss, you know, what we normally do on a monthly basis for half the time we've had the system now. So I will probably ask about an update on the Crest bus stop during that meeting, so I'll give you some time to prepare for that one. But other than that, I just, I just want to say that I just really appreciate staff and the work that you guys have done to make this happen. It was just about this time, two years ago, we were gonna get ready to get a letter from OU saying, you know, we needed to increase funding to the system or cuts would be made or, and then we don't want to run the system at all anymore, and we're going to have to take it over. And more than half our council now was not even, was not here when that happened. So, I mean, things can change very quickly, and something this big, other cities, I think, may not have been willing or able to take it on. I think all of us on the council knew we have a responsibility to keep this service in operation for our citizens. If university's not going to do it, if the county's not going to do it, the state's not going to do it, the federal government's not going to do it, then us, the local government, we've got to step up and, and do it. And thankfully, our city staff was able to navigate that extremely difficult and lengthy process to make the transition, which never happened in the United States apparently ever before, and switching an existing transit system to another operator after 40 years of operation. And then being able to ask our voters to step up to the plate and help us fund this system, and they did so in, you know, overwhelming fashion. And as you mentioned, being the first city or the first dedicated funding source to transit approved by voters in the state of Oklahoma is just another feather in the cap for Norman, in my opinion, of things that we lead the way on. And public transit is no surprise to me that we're in that category. So thank you so much, Taylor and Sean, and everybody else that really worked to make this happen.
Thank you.
No other comments, Mayor?
Very well said, Councilmember Holman. Now we will move on to items off consent. I made this statement in our last meeting, but the item was postponed, so I would like to make it again, as I stated in the previous meeting on the-
We need to go back and get the motion or a vote on the motion to approve the consent docket. We haven't done that part. We have the motion on the floor, but I need to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I was just very excited for off consent. With that, the motion on the floor, I should ask, are there any other comments from council regarding any other item on the consent docket? There were quite a few tonight.
I'm seeing no hands.
Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The consent docket is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we will move to off consent. So as I stated in the council's previous meeting on this subject, the city had received a letter from Joe Harris, President of the University of Oklahoma, expressing support for the following item. Because of my employment by the University of Oklahoma, I want to disclose this and relay that I have not had any conversations with Mr. Harris about this item or his letter, nor has there been any indication that my vote may result in a direct or indirect benefit, detriment, or employment consequence. As such, I intend to participate in the discussion and vote on this item. With that, Item 45, Resolution 1920-73, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove property located at 542 and 434 South University Boulevard from high-density residential designation to mixed-use designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the land use plan amendment.
So moved.
Back in.
I'd like to recognize Sean Rieger, attorney for the applicant, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Sean Rieger, representing in this case, and I will only give a brief presentation tonight because I appreciate very much the ability of council to allow us to give a lengthy presentation last meeting, and I just want to show you the changes of that this time. But first, if you will, please allow me to just say a few comments. This has been a long, long journey. I've done a lot of zonings in Norman for many years, and not many, other than maybe one, has approached this in my time. We've been at this for about 15 months. Mr. Scott Lambert came to see me in April 2019, a long time ago, before anybody ever heard of COVID or anything else. Scott Lambert showed up in Norman with his wife, the NHS graduate, classmate of mine. He had a dream and a vision, and we talked about it, and we went down that path. And I must tell you, I don't know that I've ever had such a remarkable client as Mr. Lambert has proven to be in this case. He has been strong and willing and open and conciliatory and transparent and working his tail off. I don't know that I've ever seen anybody work as hard as he has in this project. Meeting with, at one point, we lost count about two months ago how many people he had met with, but it was over 300 at that point, and I don't even know where it's at at this point. So he's worked very hard, and we are thankful tonight. We're thankful for his ignorance and trepidation to get here. Well, I'm also very thankful of all the council members. Spanning two councils now, we have had council members give us a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of hours. You've let me bug you with texts and emails, with meetings. As recently as this Saturday, we had Councilmember Perry come in and meet me on a Saturday. I'm thankful to all of you. You have a very hard job, and we appreciate it very much that you give us this time on large, significant projects like this. I want to thank the church, First Presbyterian Church, who I know a number of them are there tonight that want to speak to you, but they have been really helpful throughout this process and helping us from early on where we hit problems such as the first survey that we got for this project threw a curveball at us, and we found out that the properties weren't as OU and the church thought they were, and we had to go get that cleaned up and figured out. And so we're thankful for the church to help us through a long process in that regard. I'm thankful for the University of Oklahoma. From the moment we approached them with that title issue, they came forward and said, hmm, how do we solve that? And they expedited a motion onto the region's agenda to solve that issue. So we're very thankful for them. And finally, I'm very thankful for all of the community leaders and the campus current corner merchants, the downtowners, so many people that have come forward to support this project and press upon you how important it was to them. So we're thankful for all of those people. So thank you for letting me just say those comments, Mayor. And now let me just show you the changes. And so we left you at the last meeting with the request of Councilmember Hall and others for us to be entered back into a neighborhood meeting. We did that, and I thank Councilmember Hall for setting that up. We thank the First Presbyterian Church for hosting the meeting, and we thank all the neighbors for coming to the meeting. And the neighbors have been vital to this process from the beginning. Scott Lambert has met with multiple neighbors and received their input, to the point that I remember one letter we got was from a neighbor that didn't have a phone number or an email. And I said, Scott, well, let's go, let's go find them. And he went to their doorstep many times. Till finally, we were able to connect, but he was steadfast in making sure that we communicated with the neighbors. At that meeting last Wednesday, the neighbors came, and we sat down for over about an hour and a half at the church. We presented the project again to them, showed them all the updates. Councilmember Hall spoke, the church representative spoke. We heard from those neighbors at that meeting, and that was helpful for all of us, I think, as we had that dialogue back and forth. And I think what we learned in that meeting, yes, there were still a couple of issues that we needed to deal with. And most importantly, I think the issue was the perimeter treatment of this property, the boundary, as we call it. And you know this as council members, we see this all the time. We talk about fences and walls and buffers and all of these things, and it really is a point that a lot of times just takes a lot of finessing and a lot of discussion to get there. And I'm really proud to say that, I think, through the help of neighbors and council members, I think we've gotten there tonight from everything I could tell. And so what I want to show you is the changes in that regard. And so you know the noun, and we can refer to all these slides at any point if you want to see them, but I know you don't want to go through the whole thing again. So let me just show you the perimeter treatment. So hopefully, everybody can see this. This is what you were shown three weeks ago. And what you were shown was the building in the red outline here, the parking area is here, and what you see in kind of the tan-yellow- here, the parking area is here. And what you see in kind of the tan-yellow color coding was wood fencing. And we had eight-foot wood fencing back here. We had six-foot wood fencing over here, six-foot there, and four-foot up here. We had one eight-foot solid precast wall at the boundary of Mr. Paul Harris's house. Then we had a six-foot solid masonry wall around the patio. So, we went into the neighborhood meeting, and through the past week, I don't know that I've talked about a fence or a wall more in the last week than I have on this project. But through dialogue back and forth with many different people, this is what we're in front of you with tonight, a substantially different, a substantially more solid, a substantially more impressive wall, boundary treatment than I was in front of you with three weeks ago. And so, what has changed to you, and I've shared this with many people, this is what I've been showing you in recent days, is you see the color coding here. We now have a whole lot more blue, or what I'm calling the solid precast wall, than we do the brown wood wall. And so, around the entire perimeter, across the entire back, is an eight-foot solid precast masonry wall now, across that entire area. Also, we have a six-foot solid precast wall up here. Now, we will own this house, but it was important to a couple of folks to make sure that we even had a solid wall there, just in case, because we're gonna have service trucks right here. And then, we have a little four-foot fence here, but we need to be able to see over that for folks looking out into the street. So, this is important that this be a low, small barricade. So, we still have the same treatments on the interior of the property, but now really is a really substantial, significant perimeter treatment around that property. In, in context, it's important to note that the Center City Form-Based Code basically discusses a four-to-six-foot-tall garden wall. A garden wall would be a masonry wall. So, we are anywhere from two times taller to fifty percent taller now than what Center City Code would require in this location. The code also talks sometimes about privacy fencing, and it, in that location, talks about maximum of eight feet tall if you're doing privacy fencing. So, we have the height at the maximum than it would be if it was what's called a privacy fence. And we have the height at twice or fifty percent taller than what it would be for a garden wall in this entire perimeter. Other suggestions we heard was to make sure that it's uniform around the perimeter, so that we have a design aesthetic that makes sure it looks great. And to Scott's credit, the applicant's credit, I think he could have proposed something a little bit lesser, but he agreed with that. He wanted this to be a remarkable hotel. He wants it to be the best thing that anybody has ever seen for a hotel in Norman, Oklahoma, or even anywhere around here. And so, he immediately stepped up and said, no, let's make the whole thing eight-foot. And so, he did that. So, with that change, that's the perimeter change. And then, in the neighborhood meeting, there was a couple other suggestions of edits to the pod. It was discussed in the meeting. They wanted to clarify that the access to Toblerone would be closed permanently if and when the thrift store moves over to that house. We said, no problem. We'll change that. We'll clarify that in the pod. And we did, right here. I won't go through the specific language, but we included that in. Another question at the neighborhood meeting was, will you provide security cameras on the property so that we can all feel a little more protected, particularly along the pedestrian walkway as it crosses across the, the north part of the property? We said, yes, we'll do that. And we wrote that into the pod. And so, we wrote into the pod, the perimeter fencing, we replaced the exhibit to show it as exactly as what you just saw. And with all of those changes, we believe we have come to a point where we found really significant broad support at this point. And so, that's the extent of the changes before you tonight. I just want to highlight a couple other changes that we've heard since I last spoke with you, because they changed a couple of the slides that I showed you. This one, we have now been told in recent days that Sooner Legends, unfortunately, and certainly nothing we're happy about, but Sooner Legends, we're told, will not be reopening. That changes this slide that I showed you just about three weeks ago, and that this was information put together by Dr. Keith Willard of Oklahoma State University, an economist. And what it shows is really stunning to us, because now, the University of Oklahoma, with Sooner Legends not reopening, is now at only fifty-two rooms with a hotel within two miles of it. The only hotel within two miles of OU now is the Quality Inn and Suites on Classen Boulevard. There is nothing else. And so, we are unfortunately in last place on this list, not even close to second to last place on this list. And we certainly are unfortunate to see Sooner Legends close, but it makes this project even more important than it was just three weeks ago. So, with that, we have extensive support. You have seen a lot of these names come through. We're thankful for all of them for stepping up. They're not affiliated with this project, but they've all come forward to say how important it is to them. So, with that, happy to answer any questions you have. The entire team is here with us tonight on Zoom, so we can, we can address anything that you would like to do. Thank you very much for your consideration, and we ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Rieger. I appreciate the updates. Are there any questions from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Hall?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take a few minutes to put this project into context with Center City Form-Based Code. I believe we have approved two Center City Planned Unit Development projects since we implemented Form-Based Code in twenty seventeen. So, the vision for Center City started back in January of twenty fourteen. Over the following months, consultants were hired, a Center City Charette was held, that involved participation from a diverse group of residents from all across Norman. A Center City Vision Steering Committee, made up of sixteen community members, met numerous times over two years to create the Center City Form-Based Code, which was adopted by the city council on July seventeenth, twenty seventeen. At that time, hard-fought compromises were reached, including the creation of the unique urban residential designation that covers one small block and a half area on the east and west side of South University Boulevard, where the two parcels that we are discussing tonight are located. The intent, which is specifically addressed in Center City Form-Based Code, in regards to the height, is to create a deliberate and intentional transition from campus corner that allows for greater height and is not included in the boundary area, to a smooth stairtuck step transition on the east side of university, which is restricted to four stories and fifty-four feet, to the west side of university, which is restricted to three stories and forty-six feet, to provide for a gradual transition into the historic residential neighborhood made up of one- and two-story homes that are located on the west and north side of this site plan. I've been learning about the Noun Hotel for over a year, well before I ever imagined serving Ward Four as their representative on city council. I met Scott Lambert, the applicant and a resident of Tulsa, in April twenty nineteen, and have appreciated his enthusiasm and energy that he's poured into this project, and his willingness to reach deep into our community to seek support for his hotel concept. As an advocate for core Norman neighborhoods, I was introduced to Mr. Lambert last, in that April. He wanted to find out what it would take to get neighborhood support for his hotel. I have always been in support of the allowed use for overnight lodging, and Mr. Lambert understands this. I told him at that time, and remain consistent to this day, that there would be neighborhood support from me and others for a hotel if he was willing to build the hotel by following the Center City Form-Based Code specifically regarding the height of the building. He was invited to meet some neighbors that would be impacted by the project, and they also communicated their support for the hotel if he could respect the height requirement and not request too many variances from what is currently allowed by Form-Based Code. We discussed the parcel that he had not yet purchased and the very specific requirements for this parcel. The goal of Form-Based Code was to provide guidance for future development and redevelopment in Center City, and to provide strong implementation tools using both public and private investment to achieve those goals, which included stabilizing and strengthening mixed-use commercial centers and residential neighborhoods, create a pedestrian-oriented and multimodal district, and ensure a complementary relationship with surrounding neighborhoods. Ensuring a complementary relationship with surrounding neighborhoods is at the heart of what, where we find ourselves tonight, and where I've been focusing my efforts for some time. While there's no question that the Noun Hotel has broad-based community support, we also have to consider the significant impact that this project will have on surrounding neighborhoods and campus corner, both positive and negative. This project requires a Center City Planned Unit Development, or CCPUD, which is an alternative zoning district, to allow an applicant to write their own zoning ordinance when following the specifications of Form-Based Code, might be challenging for a variety of reasons. It allows the applicant to request variances or exemptions to what is intended for this particular urban residential designation in Form-Based Code. And to truly meet the spirit of Center City requires keeping the number of exemptions and variances requested in a CCPUD to an absolute minimum to achieve your goal while building goodwill with the surrounding neighborhoods. One of the applicant's widely circulated talking points is that the hotel has worked very closely with council members and neighbors to make sure it is sensitive to all concerned and is a great neighbor. I can say tonight that while there was very little movement on Mr. Lambert's part until the last five weeks, he has more than made up for it over the last few weeks with his willingness to meet with Councilmember Holman and myself and other council members to address our lingering concerns that we had to get this project right. He, he also agreed to participate in a neighborhood meeting on July eighth that finally brought together the homeowners, the property owners, and members of the First Presbyterian Church leadership team. This was a first opportunity for many of the neighbors to meet Mr. Lambert, and the first time these parties met to communicate with each other, and I'm very thankful that we could make that happen. The primary concern identified by the neighbors still remains the height of the building, which does not meet the spirit intended for this urban residential transition area. Other important issues revolved around mitigating privacy, noise, light pollution, increased traffic, stormwater, and flooding issues, and the rerouting of the required pedestrian pathway. They were also concerned about the number of proposed uses that the applicant was requesting that are not allowed in this urban residential designation, including a restaurant, two bars, retail sales and services, office and entertainment venue. With many voices encouraging the applicant to consider some changes to the CCPUD, the applicant has agreed to limit the allowed uses to a restaurant and two bars for the hotel parcel on five forty-two South University. In addition, retail use is allowed only if the First Presbyterian Church thrift shop is located to the north parcel included in the CCPUD. The applicant also agreed to add a new outdoor space section in the CCPUD to address noise concerns in the outdoor patio space. Adhering to the commercial lighting ordinance with the use of full cutoff lighting and containing light spill within the property has addressed the light pollution issue. A variance from the Public Works Department was required to allow for a new curb cut and mitigate potential traffic issues. This variance involved considering the concerns of the campus corner property owners and merchants, and has been resolved to their satisfaction. The stormwater and drainage plan may be one of the biggest benefits to the neighborhood since water runoff will be diverted to University Boulevard, and finally, will remediate years of drainage and flooding issues to this neighborhood. The most robust discussion took place over the Neighborhood Manor section of Form-Based Code, requiring a garden wall defined as a masonry wall and not a wood fence around the west and north perimeter of the site plan, to address noise, light, and provide privacy. Since this is the west boundary of Center City, the garden wall is a piece, a key piece to the transition to this historic neighborhood. The applicant, as Mr. Rieger just explained, had originally proposed a wood fence instead of a garden wall. And over the last few days, as discussion continued, Mr. Lambert, to his credit, made the decision to submit a final revised version of the CCPUD that was submitted yesterday and just outlined for you by Mr. Rieger. Since the issue of height was going to remain an impasse and unresolved for both parties, the offer to not only satisfy, but to exceed the requirement for the garden wall is greatly appreciated by the neighborhood and all of us. So, thank you for that, Mr. Lambert. I have no questions at this time, and want to make sure that my colleagues have plenty of opportunity to ask theirs.
Thank you, Councilmember. And again, this is question time. Anyone else have any questions from council regarding this item?
Seeing none, Mayor.
All right. Seeing none, this is now an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
One moment, Mayor. Those that wish to make comments, go out this door, follow the arrows around, stop on the green lines, and Deputy Ustrey will be out there to help you facilitate the process. Allison, did you have a question?
Yeah, just while they're lining up, this is not really, I, I guess my question's more for Catherine. I wondered about, just on a related topic here. I remember from a last, from a, I guess it was planning commission, that this, this particular project, if approved, would begin funding the Center City TIF. And I wondered, just because I can see, you know, I remember the Cleveland County Health Department, Cleveland County Commissioners wanted, they've already, you know, came to us wanting money for that, for their upcoming project, and we were like, yeah, there's nothing in the account. So, I can already kind of see the handwriting on the wall that if this passes, that people will be coming to us wanting money from the TIF. So, to try to avoid that questions right away, I was hoping that Catherine could tell us what the, it was my understanding, it was for infrastructure for city projects, for like stormwater and sewers. Is that, am I correct about that?
Yes, the Center City TIF project plan was based on the Johnston Study, which laid out infrastructure that was needed to support the higher density anticipated by the Center City Form-Based Code. So far, I think it's around two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been collected to date. This project would not result in a great amount of funding initially, but it would result in additional funding for the Center City TIF after completion of construction. Typically, the Cleveland County Assessor's Office will go out to a property in January, following the year it was completed, construction was completed, and assess the property. And then, that payment will become due the following year. So, there's a little bit of a lag time. It's about eighteen months from the time the property is assessed to the time it, it would be payable. So, it will be some time, and it will follow the, the end of construction, not, not begin anywhere within the construction time period. Ninety percent of that assessed value of the tax that this property pays will go into the Center City TIF. And I, I know Mr. Rieger's got some estimates on what that might be. I don't have those, but, but it would be significant.
Okay, well, just more than anything, I guess, would even the health department's project have been, would, would that have been an exception to what the TIF was outlined for to begin with anyway? Am I correct in understanding? It was like a stormwater and sewer. I see Councilmember Holman nodding his head, so maybe he remembers some of this too, but-
Yeah, the improvements outlined in that, in the study that's referenced in the project plan are primarily street improvements, sidewalk landscaping, stormwater, those kind of things, water lines, those kind of things.
Okay, so, it wouldn't really be infrastructure, or it wouldn't really be building grants for any other Center City project?
Not necessarily. There's some language in, in the project plan that allows some Google Room, I would say, but primarily, the focus has been on infrastructure.
Okay. I, I would like to hear from the public. I just thought I would, oh, sorry, can Councilmember Holman want to say something about?
Yes. So, it's been a while since we've talked to the county, but I was under the kind of impression what they're wanting us to do is fix the alleyway that's there, and some of the utility stuff. And then, thanks to voters last year voting yes on the, the road bond in April of twenty nineteen, the James Garner Boulevard project from Acres all the way south to Duffy will go right past the county's project as well, and replace all the curb and gutter and sidewalks as well. So, I think it's been a long time since we've talked to them. I think we need to maybe have a refresher with them soon. Hope that answers. But it was Center City TIF is really aimed at curb and gutter, alleyways, stormwater, infrastructure improvements to the, that area, because the city would not have the resources otherwise to, to do all of that in this area in the, anytime in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. And we can definitely have an update study session about that at a later time. Right now, let's stick with the Noun Hotel. Are our residents ready to make comments?
Go ahead, Mr. Shim.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Dan Shim. I live at thirty-two thirteen Valley Brook. I'm also the Executive Director of Visit Norman. Our mission is to attract visitors to town, let them spend their dollars here at our shops, our restaurants, our stores, our gas stations, our hotels. So, the Noun Hotel is- The Noun Hotel is a project that I urge you to vote yes on this evening. It is something that's very much needed here. A university town, we're one of the only ones I know of that doesn't have an on-campus or adjacent to campus hotel property. We've lost groups to Stillwater, Oklahoma, which should never happen because we don't have a hotel that can, is within walking distance of the university meeting space. We have some amazing business districts here in town, but I would argue one of our most well-known historic campus corner. This property would bring visitors that would enhance their clientele and bring more people to shop at their shops, eat at their restaurants, which is much needed now, but also would help in the future, not only campus corner but downtown and others. Additionally, as of Friday, it has become official that Sooner Legends will no longer be operating. They've decided to cease operations due to the pandemic. So that was one of the two properties that was closest to the university. Definitely not walkable, but we have lost that 130-plus room property as part of our inventory. So this is a much-needed project. Our university is what makes us unique and stand out as we compete against other communities to attract visitors. They want to come here. They want to spend time near the university, around campus corner, walk into all of the beautiful things that are there, the art and shops, restaurants. So I urge you to pass this tonight. It is a project that we very much need here in Norman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Edith Wilkins, 1100 West Sims. This is a quality project. I appreciate the owner's hands-on attitude on this. Continued hands-on throughout the life of the project. I have two things that I am concerned about. The wall around the patio. I would like to see it as eight feet. Norman's considered a friendly neighborhood city. We, we pride ourselves on our neighborhoods. An eight-foot wall would make a huge difference. More because of the height of people, because of the noise that would go into the neighborhood. I really think additional two feet would not be injurious to the owner and would be a big plus for the neighborhood noise. The other thing is the height. Many variances have been granted already. Center City Code took a lot of time, a lot of people. We've already granted variances for this project. See why a foot or two difference on each level be toned down to make the, to bring the building within what is the current code. I'd really like to see the owner make that additional effort. The variances for the restaurant and the bars have been made. I'd like to see it reeled back as it's not allowed to be. Because for one thing, it sets a precedent for whatever else comes along on university down on that side. It's five stories on campus, four stories on the east side of university, three stories on the west side of university, and this is four stories. It would not take a lot for each floor to be reeled back one or two feet to come within what is the Center City Code. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Ustrey, for your work.
You're welcome. Anytime. Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, all right. Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Lynn Miller. I live at 80148th Avenue Southeast. That is in Ward 5. I would also like to mention that our, I'm representing First Presbyterian Church, and our Minister Michael East would be here this evening to talk in favor of the hotel, but his family has been exposed to COVID and they are in quarantine right now. So I, I became interested in this project as an elder at First Presbyterian Church and as a member of the church. I am an enthusiastic supporter of this project because I believe it's both a financially beneficial thing for our church and I also think it's a beneficial thing for our community as a whole in many ways. I'm also here as a person that served as mayor, and I was mayor when Center City was designed and was adopted. I think I understand Center City pretty well and I love the vision of Center City, but there are many, many problems with Center City and there have been many, many challenges. So many of the projects that we've ended up getting are not really with the vision that we had when Center City was adopted. It was actually developed in order to encourage higher density, like this hotel, mixed-use projects that emphasize streetscaping and beautification. And it was envisioned as a walkable, pedestrian-friendly area that was attractive to all different ages. And that is not the majority of the projects that we're getting. Probably the best project we've gotten so far was Byrd Office Building on Main Street, and that was done, just like this project, with a CPUD. Because although Form-Based Code is what we're encouraging, you can do Form-Based Code, but you don't necessarily in with the project that's in line with the vision for Center City. So as you all may remember, those of you that were on the council, the problem became so bad with Center, with City that we called a moratorium for six months so we could make adjustments and clean up some of the problems. And I think we still have many of those problems. So now we have this $23 million proposed boutique hotel, and it's in absolutely the best location you could possibly have it in. Unfortunately, it's on the block that there was a compromise. And however, with the design and redesign, we've ended up with a building that is just eight feet taller than what is already, has already been permitted for that area. This isn't a student hotel. It's not a student apartment. It's not a resort. This is a business hotel that will be absolutely wonderful for attracting customers that can walk to the campus corner, that can walk downtown, that can walk to the university. And it's not in the middle of a single-family residential area. It's on a mixed-use street section of university. And it already has apartments, it already has businesses, it already has churches. Driven over there, except for the house that is right beside it and one other house, you really can hardly see the project from those neighborhoods at all because most of the houses don't back onto the lot of the hotel. They back onto the church parking lot. And as a church, we do care about the neighbors. And we, we really believe that if the, the project goes through, that the church may be able to renegotiate a new location for our thrift store. That's a problem for the neighbors on Toblerone because our thrift store is located on Toblerone. It causes more traffic and there's an exit there. And if we're able to negotiate that change, then that exit will, will be closed permanently. In addition to that, the project involves improving the aesthetics of the parking lot. It improves the lighting. It improves the surfacing. It improves the traffic flow in and out. And it will build a beautiful new fence all the way around the whole parking lot area. So in my mind, the city, the community, the whole, the taxpayers of our city can get a $23 million project in an area that's already mixed-use and pretty close to the campus and with minimal disturbance to the surrounding neighbors. I urge you to do the fiscally sound thing and approve this very wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Miller.
Thank you. I'll keep that on, but I'll flash my face. Councilman Greg Mahaffey. I live at 1804 Cedar Hill Road out northwest Norman. I am here as both a 48-year resident of Norman, but I, more importantly, tonight, as trustee of the First Presbyterian Church, an elder of the First Presbyterian Church. We're about a 500-member church that's right across the street from this project. And I've had the pleasure of getting to know Scott Lambert last year. And at the time, got selected to negotiate with him on the, you know, for a lease of our parking lot. I think everyone thought I got the short straw, but it's been the, it's been the long straw. It's been a very pleasure. I found Scott to be very passionate about this project, very honest, very transparent, and I'm excited about it. We have, the trustees unanimously have voted for the lease that you've seen for the lot. The church voted, the session or the elders voted unanimously. We had a congregational meeting and I'd have to say that was unanimous vote for this project. So the, the church is very much in support of the project. It's certainly going to be beneficial financially, but I think more importantly, things that we can't afford to do, like the drainage. We know there's been a drainage issue in that back parking lot for years. Scott's going to fix that. That's going to help the neighborhood, I think. Esthetically, things we haven't been able to do is resurfacing and lighting, security. All those things are going to be taken care of, so we're pretty excited about the, the project. I, I think right now we have an opportunity. I think we're, we have to be the envy of probably every town and city in Oklahoma for sure have this opportunity in these dire times and these dark days, where there's a lot of economic and financial uncertainty that we have an opportunity to have this kind of a quality project that's going to turn a, you know, $28,000 a year revenue piece of property to $850 million revenue for the city, not, not counting the ancillary benefits of the, you know, the building employment of people that's going to occur. So I've asked you to support the project, approve the project. I got to thinking that if we had all the voters in Norman, we could all pack into Owen Field. That's, that's a thought I hope some of us that are football fans are going to get to see this year. But if you could fill that stadium with 93,000 people and say, how many of you would like to have a boutique, 92-room upscale hotel with a housesmith restaurant located near, you know, walking distance of campus? I'd have to say that all but a few would ask for that. And the ones that might vote against it are ones that would win the lottery and say, I'm not going to accept the money because I'd have to pay taxes on it. So most unanimous support for this project. And anyway, I like Councilman Hall. I was at the, the meeting that we had a church hosted for the neighborhood back on July, July 8th. And I, I think there was maybe, maybe 20, I counted maybe 17, 20 neighbors that showed up. And, you know, there, there are two or three that had problems, I think, that Scott's addressed as best as possible. But I think you're, you're never going to satisfy everyone. And having been also on commercial property and been involved in commercial building projects on my own, I would have to say that the profile of this building, it's, it's, has a smaller footprint, eight feet taller than the code, but the way it's set back has a, has a smaller footprint that if you built the code and built it out to the property line, it certainly, it's, it's shorter than both, it's shorter than the McFarland Church. So I don't think it's going to stick out in the neighborhood. It's going to look very good. I would ask that you support the project. I want you to know that the church supports the project and we're in favor. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, this is weird talking with a mask, sorry. My name is Ed Eskridge and I have been, lived in Norman for 35 years. Read a little thing here. I am pro the Noun Hotel. I sat through the last meeting when you guys didn't let anybody talk and it was troubling to hear that nobody spoke about the dilapidated apartment complex that this hotel is replacing. My mom has lived next to the project for years and she was so excited when the apartment complex was torn down. She did the wildest happy dance you guys have ever seen. If you know my mom, which I know some of you do, it was wild. So although I do not live in the neighborhood now, I have before. And I would say that to say that this was, that the Noun Hotel is an upgrade would be selling the project extremely short. As a 36-year-old living in Norman, I have friends coming to town from across the country, especially during football season. Do you guys know where they stay? They stay at the Coal Court, they stay at the Skirvin, they stay downtown Oklahoma City. Guess where they aren't spending their money? And that's Norman. As a former neighbor of the property, I cannot begin to express how excited I am about this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmen. I'm Judy Hatfield, the founding principal of Equity Commercial Realty. I've lived in Norman for almost 50 years and raised my family here. My corporate headquarters, Equity Realty, is also in Norman. I'm also an owner with my partner David Box of approximately 30% of the property on campus corner. It's an honor to have the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the Noun Hotel. I'm here for one reason tonight, and that is to encourage a win-win for all of us. This isn't about we, they. It's about us. We also desperately need a win right now in the middle of this pandemic. So many people without jobs, businesses closing and declaring bankruptcy and fear of what is yet to come. In my opinion, Scott Lambert with this amazing project has brought us the opportunity for a win-win for our city, our neighbors, our university, and our state. He's taking a huge risk to try to bring a phenomenal project to our city, follow the rules, create consensus with the neighborhood, and help us begin to build our economy and the financial support this hotel can create. Win-win. That is what the result of this project will be, in my opinion. I encourage you to look at all the aspects of this project as I believe the evidence is clear. The code has not only been followed but exceeded. An unsately property was leveled and now will be iconic. Neighbors will have the privacy they requested. Property values in the area will have a positive upside. Jobs will be created. We again put Norman on the map with a phenomenal development project where city, neighbors, university, and the developer work together. Significant financial rewards will be created for the NVCB, Roman Arts Council, and of course, the General Fund. I encourage you to vote yes to pass the Noun Hotel for all these reasons and more. We need to send a signal that Norman is open for business and we will hand in hand with our community to make great things happen. We need this win-win. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. My name is David Box and it's an honor to speak in front of the Norman City Council and the mayor. I have an intimate knowledge of how tough it is for operators to make it work on Campus Corner. I believe what makes Campus Corner so great and special are the small shops and restaurants. With Amazon, the internet, frankly, the merchants have had challenges. This hotel will give them more hope and the ability to do better, which helps the community and helps continue to make Norman such a special place. I love Norman and I can't think of any negatives, only positives for this project. And I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rainey Powell. I live in 1826 Penn Oak Circle in Norman, and I am a Campus Corner property owner. I believe this project will be great for Campus Corner and core Norman. The 90-plus Campus Corner merchants and their families will benefit greatly from the estimated 120 hotel guests, and 90% of them will eat, shop and dine on Campus Corner or downtown. The city will, will also benefit from the estimated $600,000 a year in sales and room taxes. Granted, this hotel is being built in a neighborhood, but thanks to our Ward 4 council member, Lee Hall, and the investors of the project, many of the concerns have been mitigated. Lee has worked tirelessly to bridge the gap between the neighborhood and the Campus Corner merchants. And we thank her for her diligence and hard work. While I was at the meet, the neighborhood, height was not brought up. I believe this hotel will be a great addition to this, to the area and to the neighborhood. Campus Corner also needs your help. The COVID-19 virus have cost us some of our tenants and many of them are struggling. I'd like to also say, this is the fourth project brought before Norman Council. If, and the other three have, were turned down. If this one is not approved, I don't believe there will be a fifth. The cost of bringing a project to the council is well in excess of $120,000. Developers tend to do their homework. They, they check what has been approved and what has been turned down. And I do not think another developer would risk this kind of money, bring another project to Norman again. Norman needs investments. In closing, I would like to, I believe this hotel is a gift to Norman, to its citizens, with its tax revenues and assistance to the livelihoods of the 95 Campus Corner merchants. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carrie Hendricks and I live on Midland Drive in Ward 3. I am also the executive director for Campus Corner. I'm here on behalf of the Campus Corner Association to express the overwhelming support of the Town Hotel, along with the majority of our merchants, tenants and landlords. We also ask that you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers and community. My name is April Wilkie and I live on Cruz Street in Ward 2. I also work with Campus Corner Association Special Events in Ward 4. And I just wanted to let you know in person that I do support this project for the Noun Hotel. I believe that it's necessary to provide a project like this for Central and South Norman so that we have accommodations to offer when we have guests in town. And I also wanted to point out that I think any experience has to be reviewed and considered if we really are going to bring a premium hotel to the city. That's going to be something that we're going to have to look at. Otherwise, we're not going to get those types of hotels in our area. So thank you for your time. I do hope that you will consider this proposal and approve it.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Klaus. I live on Litchfield Lane, Ward 3, and I'm currently the board chair of the Norman Chamber of Commerce. I would like to speak in support of the Noun Hotel project and encourage you to vote yes. The project features high-end architectural and the beauty and the elegance of OU and the history of Central Norman. I believe it fills a void that's been much, much needed in the campus area for several years. The project represents a significant investment in core Norman. It will benefit all of Norman, but most especially the Campus Corner and downtown areas. The project will create, create much-needed jobs during both the construction phase and the operations phase. With what happened with Norman's unemployment rate since March, it'd be great to be able to help get some of our citizens back to work. The project will also be a great driver of sales and rooms tax. This will help the general fund and our arts. This is a good project and has a lot of benefits for Norman. I hope that you will vote yes. And personally, I want to thank each of you for your service to the city of Norman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost afraid to touch anything so Ellen doesn't have to keep work. Wow. My name is Stephen Coranda. I'm with the Downtowners Association. We're at 115 West Gray. And Sean, saw Sean's slide that we absolutely support this project. It's interesting, following Campus Corner and, and now downtown, that you can see the wide, broad base of support in core Norman for this project. The, the ability to have visitors to downtown Norman to be able to stay within a half mile, will add a new experience to visitors to downtown's restaurants, shops and art attractions. You've heard about the finance and the new taxes for Rainey that are going to come to Norman due to this project. We greatly support that to help the city budget, the tourism promotion, arts enhancements and park development. Again, going to Scott's far-reaching interest in talking to all the community. He even made a presentation to Downtowners, addressed our questions and how they've exceeded the concern, request of our neighbors. And so we asked for the city council's support of this application. And thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Kirk Millby. I live at 310 South University Boulevard with my wife, my son and daughter-in-law and three grandkids live right next door at 316 South University. I'm very enthusiastic about this project. I, I want to quote Lynn Miller. She said, "This is exactly the kind of project that we were trying to attract with the Center City Form-Based Code, and this is the best location for it." And if we don't approve it, I'm afraid we're going to get more mini-dos. But, but I really, I really think it's the best thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, and thank you for taking the time to hear comments. I want to congratulate the three new members of council and welcome you and appreciate your contribution to the city of Norman. My name is John Woods. I'm, I'm here first and primarily as executive director of Government Affairs for the University of Oklahoma. And we have sent a letter of support that I know was entered into the record, but it was critical enough for the city for me to come here tonight and lend our support of this project. A little anecdotal information, I am a operation of one individual within the university. And I can tell you that within government affairs alone, I've had a loss of over 100 hotel nights to the city of Norman that we have lost to bigger communities, one to Stillwater and another to Kansas State, where we had conferences that wanted to attend surrounding government affairs information that we were not able to because they wanted a hotel sited next to a university campus. And I know just as one small division, we amplified across the university. So critical for our student recruitment, faculty recruitment, business development for event participation and growth through all the facilities that we have at the university. This is a beautiful project that lends itself well to the landscape. But the setback, the eight-foot differential is, is really not and shouldn't be a consideration. I hope you'll support the zoning variance. I can tell you someone that was involved in some of the city discussions in my previous roles. This, it's within the scope and the frame and the intent of what this community wanted out of that exercise. And then finally, I just want to say, as a citizen of this community that have followed council for over a decade, I can tell you, I think there's probably one, maybe two projects every two years that come along that council remembers years thereafter that they left their mark on, that made a difference for the community, that really lended itself to the landscape, to the vitality and to the really vibrancy of the community. And unfortunately, even in those high-quality projects, very few of those we've seen in our downtown or in our Campus Corner area, but this is one of them. And so as a citizen of this city that loves Norman, this is exactly what we need that will greatly benefit our community, both from a vitality aspect, a quality of life aspect, and really assist a downtown and a Campus Corner area that I strongly believe in. So I encourage a yes vote and I thank you for your time and for your service to our city.
Thank you.
They're ready when I am. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Crumpley. I live in the neighborhood. And I'm here tonight to express my opposition to this project as proposed. While the Center City Form-Based Code obviously allows urban residential use in this area, it's with restrictions. And as has been pointed out before, those restrictions include a maximum height of 46 feet, a maximum of three stories and a ban on bars and restaurants. Now, the restrictions, as also has been mentioned before, were put in place to protect the neighborhoods and to provide a gradual transition from a maximum of seven stories on Campus Corner down to three stories on this side of university into the neighborhoods. Now, obviously, any hotel in this location is going to have some impact on the neighborhood with a loss of privacy, increase in noise, increase in traffic, increase in light pollution. I think that this project with its extra height up to 54 feet and a bar, or two bars and a restaurant will only increase those negative impacts. Now, in addition to that, in addition to the direct impact on the neighborhood, I think there's a couple of things to consider for the future that may be, maybe even more important. First, I think approving this project, well, it's safe to assume that the applicant went into this project with his eyes open and he knew full well what the restrictions were before it started. And he counted on being able to get around them as he saw fit. If we allow this project to go forward, it's going to embolden future developers to request and expect to be granted, if not additional deviations from the established zoning in this area. Second, I think that the approval would disincentivize citizens from wanting to serve in an advisory capacity to the city, because they're going to spend a lot of time and effort on whatever project it is, only to know that their efforts are going to be wasted first time a developer calls it into question. If he wants something different, it happens. Lastly, in my opinion, this approval would amount to admission by the city that the protections that we supposedly built into the Center City Form-Based Code are basically useless. It would further erode any credibility the city has left with its citizens. Therefore, I strongly urge you to wait for a project that more closely meets both the letter and the spirit of the Center City Form-Based Code. I think it's high time that Norman's government showed that they care as much for the long-term permanent residents, especially in the core area, as they do for the temporary residents and the out-of-town developers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jane Crumpley. My home is in the 350-foot notification area. First, I want to thank Lee Hall, our council rep, who is assisted by council member Holman, for their hard work and persistence in trying to negotiate for our neighborhood. As homeowners in this 350-foot notice area, we have been totally left out of the process in spite of what the applicant's attorney stated tonight. The Norman transcript reported that the project was postponed on June 23 until the developer and his attorney met with the residents near the property. That meeting occurred last Wednesday, less than a week ago. First time the applicant or, and his attorney and the church met with the neighbors. And the church, whose parking lease plays a large role in this project, never met with us initially, just to nicely ask, you know, if they were negotiating something, what would our concerns be? The applicant was allowed to move forward without this lease to the planning commission to first reading on council agenda. And it was only made available on the Friday before the agenda for second reading on June 23. In the minutes from the May 14 planning commission meeting, the applicant stated, quote, "We are going to be working hand in hand with neighbors everywhere around us." The applicant's attorney stated, "There has been tremendous back and forth with the neighborhood and we are very proud of that." These comments to the commissioners were disingenuous. They never spoke to us. In addition, the applicant showed the drone flyover that I know you all saw and said that it, there was no imposition, this is a quote from the, "No imposition on the neighborhood because it is strouted in the forest." If that were true, what happens when the leaves fall off the trees? And it goes on and on where we were, we asked questions of staff, we got no answers. So finally, it became obvious that we were all so left out of the process that attorney Bill Hickman was hired by the net to assist the neighbors. I mean, he was allowed 10 minutes at the planning commission meeting. However, told he would be limited to three minutes, just like any residents at city council meetings. For tonight's meeting, we believe that he will be allowed to speak. Neighbors yielded their three minutes in writing with the understanding that they would not make any public comments. These are only a few illustrations because of limited time about how the process does not work for citizens, but works very well for those seeking exceptions to establish city codes. I hope you will honor the urban residential section of the Center City Form-Based Code, which allows only three stories or a maximum height of forty-six feet on the west side of university, between Boyd and the alley of Apache. I also believe that number seven in Appendix B, Section 520, Center City Planned Unit Development, Section C, Standards of Development, supports that height, even that supports this height or the end of three stories, even if required is requested. We do appreciate that at the ninth hour tonight that we heard that we have an eight-foot fence to surround our properties. We appreciate that, but why does it have to get to the ninth hour before we hear any of this? So we all know they're allowed to have a hotel. They're not allowed to have many of the things that they're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Clark, I'm not sure how many more are lined up to speak, but we have had a request from a council member for a quick break. I can go look to see how many are left.
There's three more.
Three more plus.
Keep it on.
Okay.
Can we make it through to three more council members?
Hi, Eric. Are we?
Go ahead, Richard. Yeah.
So, my name's Richard McCowen. My address is forty-four oh nine Cannon Drive. I had the pleasure of co-chairing the steering committee for three and a half years that brought the final Form-Based Code to the city council at that time. And I have to tell you, I never expected to get such a beautiful project in this location or in in the core. I'm really excited about it. I think it's a beautiful project. It ma- it makes me really feel great, the amount of time I volunteered to this room and and work on these levels of details. I also have to say that, you know, we just pulled a number out of the hat in terms of the height restriction. And and I think that this is a great hotel that has, or a great building that has taken into consideration its relationship to how it, if it were shorter but extended further closer to the neighbors to the west, it would have a larger visual impact. That all said, you know, we talk about planning for permanence. We talk about buildings that are going to be a permanent part of the these fabric for another century or more to come, and we certainly have beautiful buildings here in Norman that are that age. This is a new, beautiful, permanent addition to our city, and I'm I'm excited about it, and I I hope I hope you all are too, and I hope you all I'm less than two minutes. I'll see you later.
Thank you.
That's a miracle.
I probably won't be less than two minutes. Can you see? Well, I see that pretty clearly.
Yes.
That's the that's the Devon Energy, wrong side, Devon Energy Center all across from the Casablanca Building. I'm sorry, I'm Mitch Barrow off four twenty-one Park Drive. This is, I folded it because that's the height of the proposed building. It's real tall and it's huge. I love the project. I just wish it would be down to the forty-six feet, which is the left side or the west side of University Boulevard as you come down from the North Oval. I've lived in that street for twenty-seven years. You've you've probably heard already that anyone that's spoken that lives in the area loves the project, but please bring the height down. I tol- I'm tolerating the extra special uses of the hotel. And they, the owner and applicant has definitely mitigated many things. I mean, they've done a great job mitigating things, but the height. I'm accepting the special uses, you know. I think it'll be a great addition to even my neighborhood, a campus corner, especially in the university. A little background on me, I've done about eight-hundred thousand square feet of buildings in the last ten years. I'm retired. All hospital work, about two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars, so I can visualize it, the size of this thing. And this is really a large building. The last two projects I work on, worked on for the Indian Health Service, I was the government representative on the projects, was the Chickapalas Medical Center and the Little Ax Health Center over by the dam in Norman. Like I said, project's too tall, and I'm tolerating the special uses because the applicant has mitigated a lot of things. I'm worried about the sound in that patio. They say they're going to cut off things at nine and ten o'clock, depending on the time of week. That may work. I hope it does. I hope it's not a major inconvenience to us. Like Lee said, and she hit it right on the nose, three stories on the west side of University Boulevard, four stories on the right side, and five stories in the rest campus corner, five and six stories was agreed on. And it was a compromise, and it was an argument about all those sizes and heights, but that's what they approved. Visualize standing over by the art museum or the music school, Boyd Street, looking down Elm, and you wander down Elm Street, the first right's Toblerone. And you, Toblerone makes a left-hand turn at the thrift store, goes down Park Drive, and you hit Sims. Basically, all that residential area is buffered on the east by the potential development that's going to be on the side of University Boulevard. And it's all, you know, detached housing and single-family homes. And I really feel that this height issue has to be dealt with. I've given the applicant three different options on heights of buildings. I could build a three-story building at seventy-five thousand square feet. That's the size of this building, seventy-five thousand square feet, and do it in three stories on that lot. I'm I'm accepting four stories, which is also an exception. I mean, it says three stories and forty-six feet. They're going with four stories and fifty-four feet, mere eight feet. And one of the potential options is if you're over in in the chambers, what do you call that? Council chambers area. That ceiling height is fifteen feet. And they're proposing at this point sixteen feet for the first, twenty feet for the first floor, fourteen feet for the second floor, and then ten and ten for the third and fourth floor. That's fifty-four feet. I've told the applicant quite a few times that if they were to lower the four-story building to four stories, sixteen feet on the first floor and ten, ten and ten, oh gee whiz, that's forty-six feet, and it works. So anyway, that's my wrap. They can do the building in forty-six feet and get their seventy-five thousand square feet and their ninety-two rooms. They have a lot of special uses. A conference room will stand in a reception, three hundred people. In a in a conference room situation with tables, it will have a hundred people in that room. It's a pretty big impact to our single-family residents to but I do like the project. I think it's great. So, get it down to forty-six feet. I'm happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we have one more speaker, and then Mr. Hickman, who's representing the rest of the neighborhood, will speak last, but we can take a break in between. So we'll go ahead and hear the.
That sounds good. Let's plan on doing that.
Okay.
Marsha McDarris, four forty-eight College. As the crow flies, that's a few blocks away from the Noun Hotel. I would like to present to you tonight my rationale for changes to the Noun Hotel. As mayor and city council members, you are the final decision-makers for the Center City Form-Based Code. I'd like to point out that the code offers specific strict building and development regulations. Regulations are the key word here. They're not the dreams and desires of an applicant. They're what the city and the citizens of Norman have formed in the Center City Form-Based Code that develop how how things are developed. The applicant is requesting exceptions to the regulations through a PUD. And my experience in the city of Norman, a PUD stands for Please Your Developer. A long overdue meeting was held on July eighth, in which the neighbors were finally invited to attend, and I attend. And also, the members from the Presbyterian Church were there, who stand to gain financially from this. Mitch Barrow presented a compromise to this, to the four-story height. And he mentioned it again tonight, how they could lower the interior walls of the building and achieve that eight-foot difference. The Center City Form-Based Code regulations specify that it can only be three-story. The applicant, he specifically asked the applicant that night if they, he would make exceptions to that, and he, the applicant's response was that he is developing a boutique hotel, and that you cannot have a boutique hotel unless it has twenty-foot ceilings. I need to remind the applicant and you all as council members that the Form-Based Code does not apply to the interior of a building. It applies to the exterior of the building, and it is very set in there that it can be no more than three stories. Allowing the Noun Hotel to be built with these exceptions to these regulations already established sets a terrible precedence for the rest of the area. As we have already seen, historic homes have been torn down and new three-story mini dorms basically have been built that do not actually look like what we were expecting out of the Form-Based Code and in the center city vision. The applicant has also discussed a restaurant and bar and said that to 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 lower the noise level, they were going to put it on the north side of the building. Well, that makes it really closer to a lot of the neighbors, and it seems like to me that if they could put the restaurant and bar on the south side, that it butts a parking lot, that that would reduce some of the noise that might result from people coming in, going to the neighbor, to the restaurant. Paul Harris is one of the closest, mostly affected persons by this property, and he's so upset by this that he cannot speak without cussing every other word. That I would tell him, tell that he has felt like he was not in agreement with the developer on this. But as Sean Rieger explained earlier, that they agreed to put up an eight-foot concrete wall. So I think Paul will be happy with that. I myself have been a Norman resident for the last fifty years, twenty of us have been in the campus area. As neighbors, we have been together come before the council for approval on such things as removing parking on the street for our safety, getting party houses ordinance enacted so that we can sleep at night. We have downzone College Street from R three to R one. We have added College Avenue to the Chicago Historic District. Both last things we did at our own expense. We, in this, provide affordable rental property. We have supported the council and mayor over the years. Members of this ward serve on boards and commission. We're a very large, active group of voters. I want to remind you that you, as the council, we are depending on, and we appreciate your efforts in the past and forward in the future too. But we are dependent on you to make decisions that affect our quality of life. Now, code offers attractive additions to our sales tax, our hotel tax, our property tax. But please don't let your decision be based mainly on that. I mean, Norman does need the money, but don't let it be based solely on that. Your vote is our final chance to protect the campus area and to continue our quality of life that we have, that's why we live in Norman. And I just feel like it's past time for developers that don't live in Norman or even in the state of Oklahoma to decide what development is best for Norman. I hope you, as our council members, will consider the exceptions that the applicant is asking for in relation to how they conform to the regulations that were established by the Form-Based Code. Thank you for your assistance.
Thank you. We will now take a five-minute break. Please turn off your cameras and your microphones.
Well, you know, that's really better than if I'd been in the audience, I was looking at the council member.
Good job.
Thank you. So you're ready?
All right, sure.
Yeah.
Five-minute break.
All right.
Can't tell I have a master's in communication.
Can't tell I had a master's in communication.
It looks like we're all here, Madam Clerk, or what are we waiting for?
Okay. We can go ahead and begin, Mayor.
Okay. I believe we are ready for Mr. Hickman.
There may be one more person that got in there right before we took a break, so we'll get him first and then, go ahead, sir.
My apologies, sir. Go right ahead.
Oh, just a moment, I'm sorry. Okay, now go ahead.
All right. Good evening. My name is Daniel Nelson. I live on Ladine Street in Ward 2. I'm a member of First Presbyterian Church, and I support the Noun Hotel project that is proposed for the site just north of our parking lot on University Boulevard. This is a perfect location for a boutique hotel. The design of the building itself is very attractive and will enhance the entire area. In addition to being beneficial to the church, it will positively impact the whole community. The financial benefits gained from this project will flow directly from our church into Norman. The issues addressed over the past few months of city council meetings, such as support for those experiencing homelessness, feeding those in need, and working to make the city of Norman a more inclusive community for all people. Our Way's First Presbyterian Church already supports the people of Norman. Revenue from the church's lease agreement with Mr. Lambert will continue to sustain those causes. Also, as a resident of Norman, I support this project. After living in Denver for six years, my family moved back to Norman in 2019 because we believe Norman is a great place to raise a family. This project shows that Norman supports growth, and it will contribute to a thriving community well into the future. When many are out of work and the city struggles with sales tax shortfalls, this project will bring both revenue and work for the citizens of Norman. I believe it will also help sustain the local businesses on Campus Corner, downtown, and the surrounding areas. Our church leadership has been working directly with Scott since the beginning of this project, taking into consideration the concerns of our church and the neighbors surrounding the proposed project. Last Wednesday, Scott met with the immediate neighbors and members of our church to discuss the issues they have. It appears that every effort is being made to mitigate the problems of light, sound, traffic, and stormwater. After speaking with Scott, I see the passion he has for this project. The vision is amazing, and nothing is being done halfway. This is going to be an incredible addition to Norman, and it will benefit the city for years to come. As a citizen of Norman, I support this project. As a member of First Presbyterian Church, I support this project, and I strongly encourage you to support it as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Hickman, 330 West Gray Street. I am here on behalf of Hickman Law Group and for my clients that live in the neighborhood. I'm very thankful for the nine neighbors who signed to grant me their additional time to speak to represent the folks that live in the neighborhood. I want to start by thanking council for their opportunity to speak to you guys about this important project. I will also thank the staff for all their hard work and support they put into this project. It's been a long road to hoe, in a manner of speaking. I also want to go ahead and recognize and thank Sean Rieger and Mr. Lambert for their efforts as well to try to find an amicable resolution of this situation, although there are still some outstanding issues that my clients and neighbors have issues with, from which you've heard many of them expressing their concerns tonight. But I do acknowledge that I sent comments and proposed revisions to the CCPUD, and Mr. Rieger has incorporated those in many instances into the document that you're considering tonight. And I did attend the meeting, the neighborhood meeting, with Mr. Rieger and Mr. Lambert. We greatly appreciate council's postponement. That was very much, I think, an important part of this process so that the neighbors had the chance to meet with them for the, to hear personally and directly from many of those neighbors. You heard from Mr. Rieger, there were changes, important changes made as a result of that meeting that are now a part of the document that's before you this evening. I want to try to avoid covering some of the same things that others have had, have covered, but I want to talk a little bit about the history of the CCF, the Center City Form-Based Code. That started in 2014, and there were dozens of meetings, hundreds of individuals involved in that process. And then throughout 2016 and 17, those discussions continued. And in 2017, council, when I was the Ward 4 council member, voted and passed the Form-Based Code. I can tell you that besides Stephen, Councilman Holman, who's on council, I feel like I probably have put in a lot of time and effort, and maybe more than many other council member. But as a citizen, before being elected to council, attended the charrettes and the Form-Based Codes during committee meetings, as the Ward 4 council member, attended many meetings that were discussing Form-Based Code as well as working with neighbors and passing amendments the night that the Form-Based Code was passed. So there's been a tremendous amount of work that's gone into the Form-Based Code and the rules that were put in place, including, as Mayor Miller mentioned, in 2018, we had an ad hoc committee that I chaired that further discussed changes to the Form-Based Code. But what's important, I think, for the council to be aware of is even with that pause in the ad hoc committee, there was not a change made to the height limitation and other restrictions on the western boundary inside of University Drive, which is where this project is located. So with all of the meetings, all the citizens that were involved, even the further considerations and changes that were made through the ad hoc committee that council ultimately passed after that, the height limitation in particular on the west side of university was not something that was aimed. Frankly, it was not even something brought up in the ad hoc committee for consideration to be addressed and to be revised. And I believe that the reason why that is the case is that was one of the most sensitive, if not probably the most sensitive aspect of the Form-Based Code. Was that stretch from the west side of university going from the alley on Apache down to where this project is. So there's a stretch of about another couple of blocks along this west side of university that if you approve this tonight, it hurt that many of the neighbors have concerns. Is that going to set a precedent for these additional exceptions to be allowed on this stretch of university that in compliance with the plain language and the plain wording of the Form-Based Code? The reason why that's important is because the Form-Based Code had some key goals that was intended to achieve for this area. You know, I'll just mention a couple of them to you. One was to stabilize and strengthen mixed-use commercial centers and residential neighborhoods. While this is a nice project, and I will fully admit that when I was on council, when I attended these charrettes and when we were involved in Form-Based Code discussions, I have been, I'm on the record saying that I think a boutique hotel and campus corner and in downtown would be wonderful. I've said the same things you've heard from supporters tonight, that I've traveled to lots of college towns and have stayed in hotels where I could walk the football games going to see a few football play. And it's part of why I said, I've always wondered why we don't have a hotel in the area by the campus where you can walk to. But when Mr. Lambert bought this land, he knew what the restrictions were. And as some people have said, this is not necessarily the most ideal location because of the trade-offs and the importance of the neighborhood as to the restrictions that were put in place with the Form-Based Code. Because one of the other key goals of the Form-Based Code was ensure a complementary relationship with surrounding neighborhoods. We all understood when we, when we doing the Form-Based Code and when I supported it and helped ensure that it got passed, that it was going to have an effect on the neighborhoods, especially with the student housing condos that we've seen being built. But we also knew that it was next to a commercial area, which buffer there was that west side of university, and that was one of the key considerations. So the integrity of the Form-Based Code and the work of all the citizens and the steering committee that went into something that this council really needs to give serious consideration about when you're deliberating on how you're going to vote tonight, specifically concerning the fact that this project is located on the west side of university at a specific wording regarding the height limitations and the neighborhood concerns. You can look in the actual document itself, the epics, which addresses the use of CCPUDs. It actually specifically says on the west side of university, in the urban residential area, height limit should be limited to 46 feet and three stories. And as you've heard from some of the neighbors, are serious concerned about the impact of potential precedent of granting these variances to the CCPUD. So there's two primary variances I do want you to be aware of, and variances is technically not the right word, but exceptions to the rules in the Form-Based Code. One is the uses. Page 67 of the Form-Based Code clearly describes the uses allowed in urban residential, and a restaurant and bar is not one of them. You know, I understand and recognize that a boutique hotel oftentimes does have a restaurant and bar. At this location, it's just simply not allowed as a use at urban residential. And the second one I've already mentioned is the height limitations on this side of university. Those are, while there are others, the two most significant ones that I want to draw your attention to. I do also, I want to acknowledge again that there have been, and I'm going to identify specifically the changes that have happened since the neighborhood meeting. One was there was additional language added regarding the Topperman Drive and the access to, from the Topperman Drive into the neighborhood there on Park. And we're really pleased and we appreciate the fact that that's been clarified in the CCPUD that there's going to be a gate there, a wall there, and there's only going to be allowed traffic through that area when the thrift stores open, because that will have even more greater significant impact on the neighborhood if there's more traffic allowed as a result of this project. And we were hopeful, based on the language that Mr. Rieger and Mr. Lambert agreed to, that that will not be the case. And if the thrift store is removed, they've also agreed to go ahead and add that language in because it will not require rezoning change, and we thought it was important to go address that in this document. And to their credit, they did agree to do that. And they, they understand that if the thrift store is torn down, they're going to connect the wall, so there's not going to be a gap there. And they're still not, and then the gate that'll be there at Topperman will be removed. It'll become a permanent, you know, wall to where you will not be able to access from the neighborhood using a vehicle, at least there'll still be a pedestrian pathway into the parking lot. And so that, I want to give them credit, and I want to acknowledge that that's one of the key changes that happened. They also agreed to add security cameras, which we asked about and wanted because of the risk to the community and to the neighbors as well as on the pedestrian pathway. And luckily, they did agree to an eight-foot wall, concrete, precast wall, surrounding and encompassing a project, you know, when we think that that's an improvement and a major, major consideration that we, the neighbors, wanted. And frankly, I think it's going to help the quality of the project as a whole, and as I've heard Mr. Lambert say, help to make it to be iconic-looking project by having this uniform wall all the way around it. That's going to help with noise and light and their issues. and there are issues like that that could affect the neighborhood. But I think it will also improve the project for, for Mr. Lambert. I also want to take a moment on and thank members Hall and Holman for their hard work and the efforts that they made also help make changes and improvements to the CCPUD over this, the course of these last several months. I do want to say that a couple of things, you know, the, there's been some discussions about, you know, you know, how much bigger or more massive this project could be, but I would say that those slides also show hotel could be built at the height restrictions in the form based code by pushing down the height and maybe pushing out the structure. Similar to what they've done with the little wings that they've added on at the front of the structure and putting more rooms and spreading that out potentially farther. I also want to say that some of y'all saw the presentation regarding other potential structures in the area and the heights of those structures. Those are not really relevant because of restrictions that exist in this specific area. One of the things that's also been frustrating for some of my clients is that the CCPUD is basically a negotiated document and a compromised document. And we think it's important that both on this project and in the future that engage in those discussions and those negotiations with the developer to be proactive, ensuring that the vision of the community, the vision of the form based code or wherever the project is located is pretty infallible field and and don't just make the comment that, well, the CCPUD or, or a spud it up to the developer as to what they're willing to do and what and to propose and the city not attempt to engage directly in those negotiations. Some of y'all have seen previously the drone slides about the trees that are in full bloom. Some have made comments about that. I went back and looked at, if you can easily go look in Google Earth and change the time period and see when the leaves are gone. And you can imagine if you're 54 feet up in the air and you look down at an angle, you know, you can see pretty far down the street and you can see the houses pretty clearly and potentially even into some of the windows of some of the homes down the street. So one of the, one of the other main topics I want to talk about with you a little bit is the process and you've heard a little bit about this. And it's been frustrating to say the least. So that when we went to the planning commission, the planning commission frankly voted on a project that's completely different than the one that you have before you. Interestingly though, at least at the planning commission, they did allow neighbors and myself to participate in the meeting via Zoom from our homes, not here at city hall where we had to come to do this tonight. But also allowed the, the project to go to the planning commission, which was incomplete. There wasn't the parking agreement provided. And the planning commission ended up taking action on the, on the project without having all the information. And, you know, really to have a complete application and to vote on something knowing all of the facts. Then it was allowed to go to council for second, for second reading with changes made before the Tuesday meeting, but changes to the CCPUD, the park finally being provided. Ultimately, council did postpone and give us the time, but it's just frustrating. Hopefully you can see from the neighbor standpoint to have a project that goes from one to the planning commission to Friday afternoon for the weekend with, you know, really very little time to review the new project. No notice, no communication. And then no, no chance to meet. And that's why that continuous was really important. Because that did allow the opportunity for us to meet, but I can understand the frustration that you heard from some of the neighbors tonight and clients and, and the folks who have given me their time that were not able to be here this evening. I also want to mention, and I've, I've shared this with staff that, you know, there are concerns from many of, of the people in the neighbors, neighborhoods that I've spoken to as well as myself about, you know, ensuring compliance with the meetings act. There are a lot of people who are very frustrated and disappointed and part of why they give their time to me that we have to come down to city hall to make these comments. I know that council all are very concerned about COVID and I hear and see you talking about it. But it does send, I will say, a message I want you all to think about that you're all sitting at home. And you are allowing the applicant's attorney and the applicant potentially to be in this private meeting there with you with on Zoom. But you make all the rest of us citizens come to city hall and potentially, you know, take the risk of being exposed and be attracting COVID. Just a chance to, to share public comments with you. And I've, 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 I've heard that from many people in the neighborhoods. And I frankly think that's something that I hope that the council will consider revising in the future for your meetings. We want to argue if it complies with open meetings act or for the citizens to engage without having to come to city hall and potentially expose themselves at city hall by being around lots of other people. And especially when we're trying to encourage people to stay home and to be safe. You know, one thing that I think the council could consider doing and talking to staff about is simply allowing people to call in to participate via phone call if comfortable allowing them to participate via Zoom. But so there's been some process issues on this whole, whole application that have been frustrating for many of the, of my clients and the neighbors. And I wanted to share that with you. So you understand kind of where they're coming from and where some of the emotions you may have heard in some of their comments tonight. So really in closing, I want to leave you with just a couple of questions to think about as you're deliberating on this project. Are the protections given by the applicant sufficient to allow the key exceptions to the center city form based code, code? Which primarily I'm talking about the height of the restaurant and bar. You know, I, I think most of y'all know that when I was on council, you know, I worked hard to try to be objective and fair and consistent. And one of the things that I think that y'all need to think about tonight is I will acknowledge that they have finally agreed to an eight foot precast wall, which is more than what would be required in the form based code. Yes. Is that potential concession sufficient to go ahead and allow them the other things that they're asking that are not allowed, which is the height of restaurant and bar? Number two, will granting this undermine the intent and the purpose of the form based code such that council should direct the applicant to go, to go and make other changes? You guys get paid the big bucks, but I think those are the two questions that you really need to think about as you've heard the comments from, you know, my clients, the neighbors and the things that I'm trying to share with you tonight for you guys to think about. Depending upon how you answer those questions and balance these interests, we'll try how you vote on this application. Again, we appreciate the applicant listening, listening. You know, I, I want to again acknowledge and appreciate how I appreciate Mr. Rieger and Mr. Lambert working with me as a professional and incorporating comments and recommendations that I have submitted to them. There's no doubt in my opinion that the project is better than it was when it was presented at the pre development meeting. But it still does not meet the requirements of the form based code, which is why they're asking for the CCPUD. I appreciate the time and opportunity to speak to you and respect the trust that you give. Do consideration, not only the neighbors that live in the homes presently, but the long-term impact on the neighborhood with this hotel adjacent there too. Understanding that this is not a decision you're making tonight because we're in a pandemic. Not a decision that you should make tonight purely for economic and financial reasons for the city. Although that, although I know that's consideration. Really the long-term this project will have on this, on this neighborhood and the surrounding area that's adjacent to the hotel site. And think about and reflect on the questions I've tried to pose to you as you decide how you think you should vote this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, that wraps up our in-person comments. We do have, I have several emails to read and we do have some comments coming in through our YouTube feed. If others have comments they wish to email in right quick before we finish this portion, they can be emailed to cityclerk@normanok.gov. The first one I will read is from Cynthia Rogers. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, a boutique hotel that fits the scale, including height and vision of this CCFBC is certainly feasible and desirable. This project however, does not do that as currently planned. As a member of the Center City Form Based Code Steering Committee, the noun application is disturbing on many levels. I would like to remind you of two of the specific goals of the Center City Form Based Code. Number two, stabilize and strengthen mixed use commercial centers and residential neighborhoods. And number five, ensure a complementary relationship with surrounding neighborhoods. The zoning map was carefully and intentionally designed with the Center City Form Based Code goals in mind. This project does not meet these goals. The noun would be located in the small section of the Center City Form Based Code map zoned urban residential. This was a hard fought compromise. The PUD request is for an entirely different zoning category. The PUD requests three uses that are not allowed by right under the Center City Form Based Code. Restaurant, bar, entertainment use and retail use. Thus, the request is to remove the UR zone protections. Urban residential zone protections. More troubling, approving this project creates a precedent by changing the nature and character of the block, thereby paving the way for future waivers. Approving this would disregard a carefully crafted compromise by essentially removing the urban residential zoning protections altogether. Finally, the narrative of a boutique hotel should not be confused with scale and size of the project. A 90-room hotel is the same size as the Days Inn in Norman. Three Norman hotels are smaller, the Country Inn by Radisson, Comfort Inn and Hampton Inn. The Holiday Inn Express courtyard by Marriott, Best Western and La Quinta are slightly larger. I urge you to hold out for a project that fits the Center City Form Based Code vision and respects the extensive and inclusive process that created the Center City Form Based Code zoning map. Thank you for your consideration. The next one is from Andrew Vaughn. Dear council members, I am writing to ask for your support of the noun hotel application for zoning. I have lived in Norman for the entirety of my 36 years, more or less. During that time, I have seen a lot of change in Norman, some good and some bad, just like any other city. But what sets Norman apart is the culture, or at least it used to be that way. Campus Corner is still a thriving cornerstone of this city nestled between the university and the newly revamped Main Street or the Walker Arts District. Wouldn't it be great to have an attractive boutique hotel option for Sooner Fans on Game Day or for those that frequent the Second Friday Art Walk? Wouldn't it be nice to add some jobs to the community, especially during this pandemic? By having a hotel in the center city in the city center, we can keep the monies in, you guessed it, the city center. All other restaurants and shops along Campus Corner and Main Street will thrive with the new patrons. And the aforementioned areas are completely walkable from the hotel. Cars off the street, money in the bank. The hotel will also have its own parking lot so as not to add any stress on the small amount of parking available to Campus Corner. This parking lot will feature an aggressive stormwater drainage plan to boot. This hotel is a perfect example of a good progressive development versus bad development. This development will drive the community and give a much needed hotel to the Sydney city center. I can't believe that this hasn't been done before, but Scott Lambert has the care and vision to execute this idea in a town that he loves. Other than a couple of bed and breakfasts, this hotel will serve the university crowd and perhaps my department can finally have job job candidates stay on campus as opposed to the embassy suites or along I-35. Speaking of the embassy suites and the, and rather U and P as a whole, that is a classic example of a bad development. Promised tie-in projects by developers, we got a bunch of box stores that sign in the life from Ed Noble Parkway. Let's not expand the, let's not expand for expansion sake. Norman is not an amoeba, amoeba, excuse me. Let's be smart and build up our city center. Don't ebb and my Norman with the plethora of benefits, this should be an easy slam dunk for the city of Norman. Thank you very much. This next one is from Lloyd Bum. Dear Mayor Clark, Norman City Council Members and Staff, I am writing to protest the noun, the boutique hotel project. The project is violating too many principles of the Center City Form Based Code and tramples the protections the residents in the neighborhood have fought for. The project does not respect the neighborhood. As a resident of Norman for 19 years, I have been continually dismayed that we study problems and develop solutions such as the Center City Form Based Code and then make broad exceptions at the first opportunity. Why, why have rules if we grant every exception in response to a slick presentation? This is a cool looking project, but it is the applicant's responsibility to choose a viable site, not our, our responsibility to bend to the applicant's will. The applicant began this project knowing the restrictions placed on the site by Center City Form Based Code. Yet they chose to move forward. Why would they have done that? I presume they were advised not to worry. A slick presentation with claims that we would get nothing better and and that denying the applicant will send developers to fleeing Norman, perhaps to more nonsense. Our core Norman neighborhoods are too valuable for, to sacrifice for this. Better projects will come along. This is not this is, this will not be our only opportunity for Campus Corner Hotel. If it is truly a viable idea, someone will propose another hotel at a better location in Campus Corner. An apartment building could easily be built on this site without violating the Center City Form Based Code principles. I urge you to vote against the project tonight. The next one is from Lauren Lackey. Lauren Lackey, Ward four, please do not vote for the noun hotel. It is not what was intended with the Center City Form Based Code. That would remove the only section designated for urban housing, which meant housing, not a hotel. Also, the height of the structure, the noise of delivery vehicles in the outdoor meeting space patio would be extremely disturbing to the people who live in the historic neighborhood surrounding it. What's the point of having these rules in place if developers just come in and get all sorts of variances? The next one is from Cameron Brewer. Having served on the Norman Historic District Commission for six years and as a chair over my last year, I want to, I want to be read on record in saying that potential approval of this project should not act as a precedent for approval of a future CCPUD application. Future projects that include a CCPUD should be reviewed on their own merit. During my time on the Historic District Commission, I heard far too many references to past cases without specific context on those cases. It is imperative that if we desire the Center City Form Based Code be implemented with integrity over the next 10 to 20 years, that each future project with a CCPUD be analyzed on its own merit and that approval of the noun not be taken as a precedent that any given future requested variances under a CCPUD be automatically granted. The next one is from Jennifer Shattuck. My job has me working with several hotels in Norman. I know a number of them are still struggling due to the shutdown. Is there a concern with how COVID has affected hotel reservations? And how people are wanting to, how people are not wanting to travel to Norman, especially if there is no OU football? That's the last of the email comments. I believe Annalise has comments coming through the YouTube feed.
Thank you.
Annalise?
Yes, I do have some comments through, except with through the YouTube feed. Cynthia Rogers, Ward four, the CCFBC planning process took a long time, thousands of hours and citizen input and two years from steering committee. Applicant knew zoning when he purchased property. Lloyd Bum, Ward four. The need for a hotel in Campus Corner does not make this project a good idea. Don't be taken in by slick presentations. Seth Masterson, Ward two. This hotel is great for Norman. Will provide lots of tax revenue we need and it's only eight feet. Don't let a few dissenters cripple our future. Please be reasonable and vote yes. Reggie Greenwood, Ward eight. Please try to be, try to quiet the united Norman folks and allow some progress to take place that will generate services and revenue needed for our city. Counsel, we need sales and property taxes. This hotel will generate both and greatly help not only Norman, but Norman Public Schools. Please vote yes to approve. Lauren Lackey, Ward four. Something else can replace those apartments. That would be an upgrade. That would also follow the code as we as a community can spend years hashing out and come into an agreement on. That's all.
Okay, we have some council questions or comments.
Okay.
Councilmember Wilson?
Okay, I am curious, Mr. Rieger. Why do we have to go above the height restriction? Why is that a, such a? Is there a good reason for that from the applicant?
Hey, Councilmember, yes, very good reasons. And let me talk about that. I think the height has been misspoken a little bit here. I keep hearing statements of 24, 20-foot ceilings on the first floor. That's not accurate. The first floor is 20 feet, what we call an architecture floor to floor. And so then below that floor, you have what we call plenum space is basically the in between the ceiling and the upper floor. You have a lot of mechanical, you have a lot of electrical systems, basically building systems in this particular location. And in this particular building, I mean, first, there's many factors here. One, we have a kitchen. And above kitchens, you have pretty significant plumbing, plumbing needs for mechanical and exhaust. And above kitchens, you have pretty significant plumbing needs for mechanical and exhaust ventilation systems. And so that takes up good space. But probably one of the most important factors is, early on in this project, after we went through pre-development, which I would remind you, there was a pre-development meeting on this with the neighbors. We went through pre-development, the comments came back to push the building closer to university avenue, get the height away from the neighborhood. We did that. In doing so, we moved some rooms basically over the fire lane on the north side. You've seen that. I can pull up the drawings if you want to see that. And then over the south side, we also pulled rooms over the entry drive. So we now have a building that is over the entry drives in and out of the property. When we did that, fire code immediately said, okay, well, we got to get a full boom fire truck through that opening so that we can have fire protection all the way around the building. That mandated the height of the entryway, the second floor, basically, that was over those fire entries. So the second floor got set in a lot of ways because of the fire lane, because of the mechanical systems, and thirdly, I would say, because we want a pretty remarkable lobby for this hotel. The ceiling height in the lobby is only planned at about fifteen feet, not twenty feet. That's inaccurate. Again, it's floor-to-floor, twenty feet. So basically lobby height, we want to be grand at fifteen feet. Then we have the fire access lanes that come under the second floor that have to be tall enough to accommodate fire trucks. And then we have significant mechanical systems over the kitchen that is also on the first floor. So there are many reasons why we have that height. And then, once you get over the first floor, we have the second floor height, floor-to-floor again, of only fourteen feet. And the second floor has a bar, fitness center, so we can't go to very low ceilings in those areas. And then the third floor floor has really quite low ceilings, floor-to-floor, I believe only ten feet, I believe, if I remember correctly. So this has been carefully designed, again, with significant effort to pull the building away from the neighborhood and push it as close to university as we could.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Kind of have a list of things I want to go over here. And so I do want to just extend my appreciation to Councilmember Hall for kind of asking me to come help negotiate and work on a better project based on my time served on city council and that I served on the original Center City Form-Based Code Committee and the, actually, the Center City Visioning Committee was the first one. And then the second ad hoc committee to revise it. So very extensive knowledge of this policy in this area. And I was very excited to have the opportunity to join Councilmember Hall meeting with Scott Lambert and Sean Rieger and neighbors and trying to come up with a way to make this project work for everyone. And I also want to say thank you to former Councilmember Hickman for the time that he has spent. I would absolutely agree that nobody else on council besides myself probably has spent more time working on the Center City Form-Based Code and being involved in that process. Mayor, former Mayor Miller was very involved in the original committee as well, as a council member and as mayor. So a lot of people have worked and spent a lot of time on this policy. It's very important to a lot of people. And, you know, it really started out of some development pressures that were starting to happen in this area around 2010, 11, when we started seeing some old houses started getting torn down, and nobody knew what was going on. And we started seeing new buildings constructed that did not look like they belonged in that area of town. They kind of looked like they would be in a more suburban-type setting. And that may have its place, but it doesn't look very well in this type of neighborhood where you have hundred-year-old craftsmen-style wood panel houses and, you know, old brick buildings and things like that. There was also a very large, student-oriented, mixed-use project that was proposed on Campus Corner. And there was actually no policy that existed to address that type of project back then. Norman's zoning codes date back to the 1950s and do not anticipate large-scale projects like high-density. That the original project, it was called the Riser Project, was the name of the developer. And it would have been just to the north of Campus Corner, along Ass, between Buchanan and Ass. And I think it was six stories and had a built-in parking garage and ground-level retail that faced Ass. But there was no policy at all zoning-wise or development-wise in Norman to even address what type of project was that? How do we even do that here? And a lot of neighbors are very concerned about it for very good reasons. And I think the city council at that time, Mayor Rosenthal, really initiated it and kicked it off. And Councilmember Greg Youngman, former Ward Four as well, really kicked off the discussion and the charrette meetings with neighbors. We basically just said, come down to Norman High. I think we met at a couple of different places, City Hall. And let's talk about what do we want to see happen in this area between Campus Corner and downtown Norman? We're seeing a revitalization of our Main Street and downtown area in the last fifteen years. And we had recently completed a Campus Corner tith that replaced all the sidewalks and made all the sidewalks ADA compliant, put in new streetlights, stuff like that, put in new parking meters that accepted credit cards. So some stuff like that. And this new development was starting to happen in between the area. Many of us really felt strongly that the 1950s zoning ordinances and development policies of Norman really encourage suburban sprawl. They really discourage urban revitalization, urban development. They discourage building anything new that looks like what we have on Main Street. Literally was not allowed. Our, most of our old zoning ordinances require that buildings be set very far back from the street. They require massive amounts of parking. That's why you see strip malls with big parking lots in front of them, and they're only one story. And, you know, because our zoning ordinances after World War II literally just kind of went a different way and said, we don't want to build anything like that anymore. We're going to do it this way. And that was really centered around auto-centricity, going away from the scale of the person and starting to build our cities to the scale of a car and how long it takes to travel in a car. And so what we've seen in the last twenty years in the United States is a real resurgence of cities all across the country that are saying, you know, it's extremely expensive and really unsustainable to keep sprawling out into the greenfield forever and ever. And in Norman, we have a lot of it that we can spread out into, and we have been doing that for the last sixty to seventy years. And what we've started to see is an interest by people, younger folks, older folks, wanting to live in the central area of town where they can walk to Main Street. Maybe they still have a car, but they have the option, the choice of walking, if they want to, down to the corner store or down to their favorite bar or their favorite restaurant or, you know, some sort of entertainment that's on Campus Corner or Main Street or over to campus. So it's an extremely attractive area, and especially that area between Campus Corner and Main Street. When we had the charrettes, you know, we identified, we brought in a national firm to come in, consulting firm to come in and look at the area for us. They walked the whole area to tell us, you know, what can we do here? What problems do we have? What assets do we have? And they talked about how Main Street was only, it's only six blocks away from Campus Corner. It's a five-to-ten-minute walk. But they identified that the way that the built environment was between there, people were not very likely to walk from Campus Corner to Main Street. People were almost always going to get in their car, and they were going to drive down to Main Street. And the reason for that was what they identified was in between Campus Corner and Main Street, we had several empty parking lots at nighttime that are dark. There are a few abandoned buildings, some rental properties that are very rundown and have not been taken care of in a very long time. The streets are not very well-lit. A number of things that would discourage somebody from walking from Campus Corner to Main Street, even though it's not really that far. And so part of their plan was going street by street, block by block, identifying what could be done to make this block more attractive and a more welcoming environment for people to, instead of getting in their cars and driving to downtown from Campus Corner, they'll walk down that way. And so that kind of kicked off the whole thing with Center City. And why we did this was, again, that we were seeing development already happening that we did not really think, we didn't really think fit in with the area. And in a lot of ways, what was happening too was not fully taking advantage of the space. What we were seeing was lower-density, two-story, with parking in the front still, setback from the street, and not looking like it belonged there. And what we were able to do, you know, was come up with a plan to, anything new that gets built, the new building's going to have to be brought closer to the street. We're going to eliminate the driveways that end up blocking the sidewalks. That was one of the biggest deals with Center City, is people complaining in Core Norman all the time, invalid complaints too, of cars parking in driveways and blocking the sidewalk. And then somebody in a wheelchair has to go out into the street, or they got a stroller, and they have to go out into the street to get around. Well, the Center City policy, over time, will eventually eliminate all the driveways in this area. And all the parking will be in the back, brings the buildings closer to the front, which creates a more inviting and welcoming, walkable environment. And over time, the aim would be that Campus Corner and Main Street will eventually be more well-connected to each other. So that six blocks and that five-minute walk doesn't seem like hardly anything at all because there's activity, there's people, there's buildings in between, creating that environment. And so a lot of things that we talked about in Center City, one of the things we didn't really talk about in any depth really was the idea of a hotel. I think many people have thought a hotel on Campus Corner or downtown. I really probably envisioned one being on downtown more likely would be where we would see it just because there are more empty lots in space to build something down there. In Campus Corner, there really is not a lot of area to build anything else outside of this particular location. All the areas, other areas around Campus Corner would require the demolition of existing houses. And I understand that this particular location did require the demolition of an apartment building. And I don't want to, I do want to underscore a little bit that I know that apartment complex was not very attractive at all, and it definitely did have issues, potentially health concerns. I'm not sure about mold. I know there were insect issues, things like that. But it was a source of affordable, low-cost housing in Core Norman, very close to Campus Corner and the OU campus. And the loss of it is something we really do have to think about as we go forward with policies in the future of how we can encourage more affordable housing in this area to go with the other redevelopment stuff that we're seeing. Many have pointed out that that's something we haven't fully been able to get a grasp on. It is very difficult to incentivize affordable housing when you don't have anything to incentivize it with as far as monetary. The tith, as we've talked about, has no funds in it, and it's not meant to incentivize that type of stuff. It's meant for infrastructure. So we do need to come up with a way to address affordable housing in this area. It's a real serious issue. Displacement is an issue. And, you know, but I think everybody can agree, the old apartment complex had problems, and it's probably better that it is gone. But I just want to make sure that we did mention that. There's a lot of issues with Center City that we still need to address. We left the last ad hoc committee. We made a lot of progress. We made some really good changes that I've already seen in action in some of the new things that have been built. But we also had a whole list of stuff that we still need to come back and visit. And we've kind of been, you know, we put everything, a lot of things on hold or delayed due to COVID and not being able to meet in person. But we really do need to get back onto that because there's several issues that we need to address, several issues that have been brought up by this project. And in addition to the list of issues that we needed to address, like design, architectural design review, among others. So we do have a lot of work to do still on Center City, I think, to get the real desired result that the community wants. But it takes a lot of work. And there's some other things I do want to mention. We have said no to a couple Center City PUD requests already. We've approved one, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Bird's building on Main Street. And we've said no to a couple of them. And I think, you know, the reason why we created the Center City PUD was because we thought, we do know what we want, but what if something comes along that we did not fully, you know, we didn't think of every aspect or every detail that might go along with it? And so we created the Center City PUD to have an avenue to get to a project, if it was one that we thought was very unique and that we thought we really wanted, but didn't necessarily think of everything to address, how to get it when we were developing the policy. I generally prefer PUDs a lot of the time because it gives us more control over what a building and what a site looks like in the end. I've, after seven years on the council, I've approved several rezonings over the years where what ends up being built is not what I saw in the pictures. And on a standard rezoning, they don't have to build what was shown in the pictures. It just has to meet the zoning, it just has to be within that zoning code as far as the use. So I often prefer PUDs because I know what I'm approving, that's exactly what it's going to look like. And it also allows us to put in protections that are in perpetuity with the property, unlike a standard rezoning. So I can understand why some would think that it's giving a developer kind of what they want, but I have always viewed it as giving the council and city more control over what the end result is than just standard rezoning. I think a month or so ago, I was definitely prepared to vote against this based on what I knew about it and based on the facts of the matter at that time. I've really been appreciative of the applicant and his representative, Mr. Rieger, and for taking the time to meet with us. As I've mentioned, I think, Councilmember Hall, I met with them for nearly ten hours, just her and I, with them one-on-one, literally going over a bulletin point list, one by one, and debating back and forth, trying to come up with how we could best address, best address the issues that the neighbors have brought up and the issues about the code and the variances they're asking from it. So I do appreciate that time that they're willing to spend with us and hear us out and understand that we were there trying to represent the neighbors, trying to get the best project we could possibly get. As many have mentioned, a project like this would be there for a very long time. So making sure that it's the best possible project should it get approved. And that's what I've always viewed as something that's really important on the city council is sometimes projects come along that you may personally not like or be against, but you'll work to try to make it as best as you possibly can or as least bad as you can, whatever the view you may look at it from. And sometimes the project will pass because the majority of the council supports it. But as a council member, you worked and you represented your neighborhood and your residents, and you tried to put every little piece in there to make it as best as you possibly could and have the least amount of impact on the people that are concerned. And that's just a big part of this job that I've always really thought was important. It's always trying to do what we can to make these projects the best they possibly can. And one thing I did want to mention, a neighbor did mention as a concern was the location of the bar and restaurant actually is on the southeast side of the building, and it's not on the north or the west side, on the neighborhood side. And that was, that would definitely be very important to us as well. Wanted to make sure everything's far away from the homes and neighborhood as possible. They are going beyond on a couple of things. As mentioned, the As mentioned, the, the fencing, uh, the wall part is going taller than they're required. And they are going beyond in regard to the lighting ordinance too. And this was a, maybe an oversight. I'm not sure if it exactly was an oversight on our part, uh, because the Center City Form-Based Code lighting, lighting code is actually less restrictive than our commercial lighting ordinance. Uh, this applicant is agreeing and is written in the code. They will be following our commercial lighting ordinance, um, which is more restrictive than the Center City, uh, lighting ordinance. I think our oversight there might have been that we were focusing a lot on residential, uh, buildings or apartments and things like that. And may just not have thought about, well, we need to apply our commercial lighting ordinance to things like parking lots and these bigger buildings, which would make sense to me. So that would be another thing I would add to our list of, of things to revise. Uh, so I do appreciate their willingness to do that. It's really important. You know, our lighting ordinance was a very progressive one when it was passed, I think, 2010 maybe. Um, it was controversial, but it's really made a big difference in when you see a commercial area that's next to a residential area, some of the new 7-Elevens or the 7-Eleven on Flood, Flood and Robinson was the first one. And really aimed to limit or eliminate the light spill over from a commercial building into the residential area, uh, limiting glare um, and directing light so that it's actually lighting up the ground instead of the sky. Um, so, uh, really appreciate they're willing to go beyond on that one. And I do think, one of the things I mentioned too is the, I think what a hotel offers for Campus Corner and this area of Norman is we have had a lot of conversations about concerns with Airbnb's in, in particular in this area of Norman. And a demand for them because there is nowhere else, there's no other lodging. Um, there's some, there's some very nice bed and breakfast, uh, in this area, um, that I would highly recommend anybody stay at any time. Uh, but there's not enough of them to address any kind of big events, um, or game day activity, um, at the OU campus. And so, uh, what we see is a high demand for Airbnb's, which we all know are, you know, rent by the room in homes that are in the middle of neighborhoods. And we've heard a lot of concerns from neighbors about that. We're been working on policy to address it, um, like many cities have. And I think something that a hotel would allow, would allow like a release valve for that in a way, uh, to take some of the demand off the neighborhoods having to bear that, uh, burden. Uh, it's hard to mention that, you know, a hotel would be good for businesses on Campus Corner. I think that's a given for most. I've worked at restaurants and bars on Campus Corner for a very long time. And most people would absolutely agree, this would be good to have, you know, 93 hotel rooms this close to our bar, our restaurant, our retail store. Uh, so I don't think that there's any disagreement from anyone on that one. Um, I do think this type of building, um, this hotel could offer, I think, both talked about buffers from the neighborhood and Campus Corner. I think this building could actually, the way it is designed, could help offer a buffer between the neighborhood and what could eventually be a pretty large structure, uh, just located to the south, um, in that giant parking lot. That's part of the Center City discussions. Um, is the number one identified location for parking structure in the future around Campus Corner. City doesn't own it. OU does, and Church owns part of it too. And so whether it ever happens, I don't know. But our parking plan has identified that as being the prime location for it. And a hotel would be in between that and the neighborhood. Uh, the, I also want to talk just briefly, really the last thing is the height issue. I have a lot of personal feelings about, um, I, architecture and city planning is really what got me interested and fascinated with city council meetings when I was a kid. Uh, seeing presentations just like this tonight is why I started watching city council meetings and why I am sitting here right now. Um, so this is right up in my interest, uh, here and and in the committees, we did have a lot of strong debate and disagreement about height. And, uh, some, no height limit, uh, some for a very two, two stories, um, was it? You know, and we did come to a compromise on this side of the street, um, in order to, in an attempt to protect the neighborhood from the increased height that was allowed on Campus Corner. I should say the, the prior zoning on Campus Corner actually had no height limits. So, um, our C3 commercial could be Devon Tower. Highly unlikely that that would ever happen on Campus Corner. There's no market for that, of course, for 50-story skyscraper. But our zoning ordinance did allow for it without requiring any additional parking too. So, um, so the height issue, uh, for me, I think has been touched on a little bit tonight. And that is, uh, to me, bringing the building closer to university, closer to the Campus Corner side, and adding a little height to the front, to the top, in exchange for it not being as big on the back or extending as far close to the neighborhood, I think is something we really have to take into account. Um, and something we really didn't take into account when we were developing the policy and discussing it was, specifically on this property, because, um, there's a parking lot kind of buffer between it and the made, the houses on Elm Street, uh, we never really talked about, uh, if the, you know, maybe in this particular, this specific special setting right here, that if the front of the building was taller and they agreed to reduce the length of the building and mask the building on the back towards the neighborhood, that we could make an exception for height. Um, if you go north of this property to the house that the applicant has purchased, uh, where the thrift store may move, I absolutely would agree that, uh, three stories maximum. And maybe that should be added to our list of things to revisit, uh, to set in no exception. Because when you go north of this property, then it butts directly up to the homes on Park Drive. And so, uh, the properties on University butt directly to the backyards of homes on Park Drive. There is no parking lot in between or an open space. And so I would actually, uh, like to see us maybe strengthen that three-story, uh, 46-foot height restriction north of this property, um, going forward to give you, to hopefully give some more assurance and security to the neighbors about that. Uh, but this particular property, I feel like there's a large enough buffer space being a parking lot between the back of the Elm Street homes and the back of the hotel building. I do feel like it's pulled back far enough away and have made, um, again with the tall wall and things like that. Um, they, we've really nailed down the details of the, uh, what's allowed as far as the restaurant, as a bar, as office, as, um, retail, there's no retail, there's no gallery space, none of that. Um, no outdoor entertainment, some DJs, no bands, no TVs that will be on the building. Nobody in their backyard on, on Toberman or Park or Elm Street will be able to see a TV screen from the hotel, uh, from the patio or anything like that. We made sure to address that specifically. And as, uh, they talked about for the stormwater, um, improvements are significant, especially for this area of town. Um, improvements that I'm, I don't think the city would be able to make, be able to make in this area, uh, for quite some time. So, um, based on those factors tonight, I do want to make sure and, and just, I want to thank Mark and Jane Crumpley and, and Marcia and Mitch and Judith, uh, for getting up and speaking tonight for the neighborhood and Councilmember Hickman as well. Um, we have heard your concerns. We are listening. Um, and I'm going to vote for this project tonight. I encourage my colleagues to do the same. And I'm hopeful, uh, that we can see a really great project come to this area and hopefully bring us together, bring this network together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thorough as always. Uh, next.
Councilmember Beerman.
You'll like it. It was a thousand years ago that I raised my hand. So, um, and I apologize if my voice kind of fails on me again. Um, but first I just, I, I want to say I do, I value the several years of work that the community put into the Center City Form-Based Code. And I truly do feel that PUDs should be the exception and not the rule. And I think, I think this council needs to decide just what it wants. Do we want to allow just an unlimited number of PUDs to kill the Center City Form-Based Code through death by a thousand cuts? Do we actively address the ongoing shortfalls with another administrative delay and tackle it head on? Um, I think we just need to decide what we're going to do because what happens is that we all recognize there are problems with the Center City Form-Based Code. And I think that makes it even more difficult when, uh, when a CCPUD comes before us because we haven't really decided which way we want to go. Do we want to throw our hands up and say, maybe this was a mistake? Maybe we go about it a different way? Or do we say, okay, at some point, we're going to just stop and fix this? And I know that coronavirus kind of threw some of that into flux. But I also am not sure that we can really know yet what the Center City Form-Based Code can be because we haven't truly stuck to the principles established in it. And so I do worry about the impact of precedent for height exceptions along the rest of university in this area. Because I wish I could, I wish I could ensure that all future projects are only looked at on the merits and not tied to past projects as precedent. But we all know that's not true. Or past projects wouldn't constantly be referenced as precedent for wanting us to vote a certain way. We all know that this happens. And what we, we haven't, what we haven't done is just ask that developers in this area, give it a chance and ask by not supporting PUDs until we get something that just tests it out. Uh, because the question for me really comes down to whether or not the requirements in the, the Center City Form-Based Code are so burdensome as to be impossible to meet or just inconvenient and not what a particular applicant wants. And I think we've seen a little bit of this in how this project has shifted and moved. Um, we've seen some progress made in some areas, but not in others. And I do particularly worry that the height, the height restrictions were already a compromise when the Center City Form-Based Code was developed. And now we're going to further erode them by making exceptions to them yet again. Um, I do have some concerns about the economic impact of this particular hotel. We don't know, and frankly, I think we could safely assume that it probably won't all be net new revenue to the city. These, these rooms are likely going to be filled with people who are already going to be coming to Norman and would simply stay further away or in an Airbnb, which right now doesn't bring in hotel motel tax revenue, but will shortly. Um, and so I do worry about that. This is, especially if we're already losing hotel rooms from Sooner Legends. These are going to be people who are already coming to Norman, who are already going to be spending money in Norman. And I, I don't necessarily believe that we're going to see the significant boost in revenue, um, that would be if it was all net new. And I think that that's a real concern. I think there's also a real concern about the next few years and what that's going to do to our, to our room occupancy. And so, you know, I, I have gone, I have frankly, tonight, I even, I've gone back and forth multiple times in how I'm, in how I think I'm going to vote for this. I think everyone has made really excellent points. I am in, I don't think anyone, maybe except the Stormwater Division or the residents of this area are as in love with the Stormwater Plan as I am with this. I really, I really do love it. I think it's absolutely fantastic. And I really think that this sets the standard for all, for all future stormwater needs, uh, with new development. And I am very, very pleased about the changes in the wall on the outside. I really, really am. And so this is, this is a, this is a really tough one for me, um, because I feel like we haven't really quite given the Center City Form-Based Code a real chance and stuck behind it to say, let's do it the way we designed it. Let's do it the way the thousands of hours of work product created. And I wish, I, I really just want us to try and stick with that because I'm just not sure that the, the final issues that we're requiring, uh, that are, that are asked, excuse me. I was trying to get my words out before my voice broke. That I, I, I question whether or not the exceptions we'll be making tonight are so burdensome as to be impossible to accomplish or just inconvenient. Because we've seen some renderings of what this building could look like if it were three stories and maybe took up a larger footprint. We know that it's possible. It's just not what the applicant wanted. And I am concerned about the precedent that this sets because as much as we would like to think that these past projects won't be brought back up again in the future, we all know they're going to be. So I honestly don't know that I can say right this minute how I'm going to vote. I know that there are some other hands up and there's going to be more good feedback. And I'll probably bounce back and forth another couple of times. Um, but I do appreciate everyone's work in this, particularly Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Holman. And, and for the applicant and his team meeting, meeting with neighbors. Uh, but I, I am still very, very torn on this because I do worry that this is a real big one that is going to undermine the Center City Form-Based Code moving forward. And, and that's a real concern of mine.
Councilmember Petrow.
Okay, so I wish that my notes were, um, better organized, but we're going to do our best here because I have a few different things to talk about. Um, I guess the first thing is, um, along the lines of what some others have spoken to, um, about the CCPUD generally, um. So we have a process in, um, the Form-Based Code. And it's not just do whatever you want, send it to us and we'll let you know. It's quite extensive. And with that, um, even the, let's say C7 speaks to building height and speaks to, um, this area, I believe, and that it should be a maximum of three stories. So I want to say that, you know, I haven't gone through this with a fine-tooth comb like I, I hope that the applicant has and that, because I feel pretty confident that the opposition probably has. And so I want to preface all of this by saying that, while that's just one area, I feel like there could be some other issues there that I'm not, um, so sure that this would even, even if I decide to pass it, I'm not so sure that it would stand up in court. Um, and the only reason that I would vote yes is that I'm making the assumption that this litany of different requirements have been met and that this project fits within those. Because as I scroll through and read it, I see some real issues and I, I would, if the applicant, um, feels like that some of these details are going to be problematic, um, I would hope that, um, rather than it getting strung out in some sort of big lawsuit, that we would come into what's required by the PUD. The second part of this would be along the lines of what Kate has said. Um, and that is, I guess, the big question is, do we even want PUDs down there? And I understand Stephen's argument for it. And the fact of the matter is they are allowed right now. PUDs are allowed. So what, what's coming before me is an allowable idea. A PUD is allowed. So again, if my vote for yes makes a huge assumption, should I decide to vote yes, makes a huge assumption that every single one of these requirements, um, is not questionable, that it is meeting these requirements. So my, the point of what I'm trying to say here is that I'm not a hundred percent sure, not even 50% sure that they do. I mean, I will read this right here. Um, building height, the height of structures on the west side of University Boulevard, extending from Boyd Street to the alley north of Apache shall be a maximum of three stories. Properties currently zone C3 in the Center City area. Uh, as of the date of approval by city council, the Center City Form-Based Code shall have no height requirement. So, and that's under a requirement for getting a CCPUD. There are many, many more. And so I am make, if, if, but if I vote yes tonight, it is under the assumption that it's not unclear, it's not vague, that it has been met. That that's not in question. Um, okay, so that aside, um, I do think that I have some PTSD from, um, the UMP TIF. And so I want to definitely revisit, um, this Center City TIF. Because should this pass tonight, um, at some point in the next three years, um, it's going to start getting, um, funded. And so I think it's incumbent upon this council to make sure that we don't have a bunch of crony capitalism, corporate welfare happening in our beloved Center City area. And that the money that goes in there is very clear that it is for the desperately needed um, common improvements, um, for Ward Four and for that area. So, um, I want to have a study session on that, hopefully, Mayor, that we can make sure that this area is getting, that there isn't any ambiguity there, hopefully, and that we can all make, maybe this would be something on the agenda for next year. I mean, I don't know, but fairly soon that everybody has an understanding and a, um, refresher on what that TIF looks like. Um, let's see. One, the question that I had quickly, which is going to be an easy BDO one actually, but Mr. Regert, is this have a storm shelter? Is there some, I mean, since we have three, four stories going on, have rooms, what are we doing if there's big tornado?
Yeah, I don't think we've gotten to that level of design detail yet. Uh, it's not a part of the zoning PUD, but uh it's certainly something we could be considering very carefully. Uh, obviously with a hotel and yes, something that we have to look at, but I don't think we have a decision on that exactly how that would be operational.
Okay, um, can I get your assurance that there will be some place that these people, doesn't have to be a necessarily a shelter, a FEMA graded shelter, but at least a bottom floor place that everybody can go, that you don't have your third floor guests that are, get the top shaved off or whatever?
Yeah, I think part of the, we would have to deal with that in terms of just simply marketing in Oklahoma. If you ever talked to economic developers, one of the key concerns is bringing visitors to Oklahoma, they have to deal with that. So again, it's been discussed, I know from a very preliminary standpoint, but we haven't gotten to level yet of where we would, where we would put that. But I know it will be a consideration of the developer.
Okay, thank you. Um, speaking of the UMP TIF, it seems to me right now that um I would disagree with Jonathan Fowler. I think everybody is actually staying in the UMP at the moment, rather than going all the way down to Oklahoma City. So this would definitely be a major improvement for people who are trying to go to the games. I don't think they're going to have any problem selling out every game day. Um, and I'm sure that, you know, I know the embassy does, all the hotels around here do. So um, I, I like the idea of um our campus corner merchants and our independently owned businesses on Main and on Campus Corner, all of that area getting um much needed traffic of people that are actually staying the night and the restaurants and bars. I really hope that um the people that are going to stay here um would be sharing their wealth around to the um neighboring restaurants and bars and that hopefully there would be some sort of room delivery. Um, Pizza Shuttle can deliver inside the hotel that is, it's friendly to existing businesses around, I guess where I'm getting at. Um, I appreciate that this has been the fifteen month journey that you spoke about, Mr. Reger. And um Councilmembers Hall and Holman have been amazing. I mean, this is, they've kept council um up to date on what's going on with it. And I cannot thank you enough. Um, Councilmember Hall, you've been just amazing on this and I really, really appreciate it. I will say that Wards four and Ward seven are in very good hands as far as advocates for their wards, for their neighbors, um, for their small businesses, all the interested parties in this. It um, I've just been so impressed with it. So, good job. Um, I'm very sensitive to the quality of life and arguments and the respect for the neighbor arguments that we're hearing from the people, the opposition that's coming up, and it's mostly neighbors. And it sounds to me like it's not necessarily opposition, like that they just have, um, they really want the Form-Based Code to be um elevated. And so again, should I vote yes, it's going to be because I believe that they have met the requirements of the Form-Based Code. If they have not, that would be something that is going to get hashed out after us. And um, I'm being very clear on record that I am assuming that all of these boxes have been checked. And then, and with such clarity that it's not in question because I want the Form-Based Code to be upheld in its current form. If we need to amend it, that's on us. But if they've brought something to us that it meets that, then they've done what they needed to do. So I am understanding, Mr. Reger, there have been no historic homes that have been raised in order for this to have gone in, correct?
That's correct, Councilmember.
That's very important to me. Um, it's, I, it meant a lot to me that you did meet with the neighbors. I don't know, I wasn't there. Um, but for me personally, if you're going to be neighbors with these people, that this is your neighborhood. So um, just starting that dialogue and having um face-to-face conversation was a huge step that needed to happen. And so I, I know that it was frustrating to have this delayed. And regardless, I think it was a very fruitful um experience. And the eight-foot precast wall is something that um I spoke to you on the phone about um before the last meeting of saying, I didn't understand why it was just a fence. This makes a lot more sense to me. Um, as far as meeting the noise level that I have to imagine, what would it be like? If this was in my ward, what would be some of the main um considerations that I would have? And it's that the people, and I think I told you this on the phone. Um, it's the people that lived around, what is their experience going to be if all of a sudden they have a hotel? Well, there's a lot more factors with a Form-Based Code. So there's probably, we're not a historic area. So this is probably not likely to happen in my ward, but it could. And if it's some sort of um different type of structure that's being built with a lot of traffic and it's changing the area, I would want to make sure that my people are, um, their quality of life is upheld. And that's a big addition that you've made and it's expensive. And I appreciate it um a lot for those people uh to be able to block some of that noise, block some of that light. And oh, by the way, um, if Councilmember Holman believes that we've done something with light pollution that isn't um uh consistent with this code, that'll be taken up too, I'm sure. So again, my vote is assuming that all of these items have been met. Um, and let's see, uh, same thing with the uses for a PUD. I think hearing former Councilmember Hickman. And then finally, on with that experience in particularly, I um, I, this is not necessarily to do with this particular project, but for us as a council, I think it's really important that if um our neighbors in any project haven't had the opportunity or they're not being heard and they resort to hiring a lawyer to make their voices heard. We need to give them access onto the meeting and they need to have representation, just like the applicant has his lawyer present. It seems really lopsided to allow the applicant to have a lawyer and not allow the neighbors to have their lawyer to participate as a guest in a meeting. Um, and maybe that's just me out of um respect for the profession, but I do not like that kind of power imbalance. And I know that this isn't a courtroom, but if we're going to have lawyers that are representing applicants, we, we need to allow lawyers that represent the protest area. And that's, I feel really strongly about that. So I hope that we will revisit that because um people deserve to have their voices heard. This is going to change their lives. So with that, um, I will be supporting this tonight. My ward supports this. Um, I think you all have heard that, had several people tonight that were Ward three um residents that came forward. Um, but again, it's under the assumption that all of these are not in question, that they have been met. All of the elements to a CCPUD.
Councilmember Foreman.
Hi, I'll be really brief in what I have to say. Uh, there's things about this I really, really like. When I was campaigning for my ward, one thing that I really talked about with my constituents was bringing some of that sprawl back, bringing businesses and development back towards the east side of Norman. So I really like that it's going to do that and hopefully start a trend more in this direction. So I really appreciate that. Um, before I was elected to this position, I served on the Historic District Commission. So Councilmember Hall, you know, that's really important to me. It's important to you. Uh, so I really appreciate everything that you've done and Councilmember Holman in rooting for them because this sort of predates me on council. Uh, and so for me, the number one thing is making sure that the residents get their needs met. I know you can't tick off every box, but from speaking with Councilmember Hall, uh, the great lengths that you've went to and from when it started to where we are today has greatly uh improved and uh really helped the residents. Uh, only question, thing like, I'm going to consider, it's just a goal, it's going to be five, four feet, we're not going to consider taking the eight feet off. I don't know, I'm late to the table on this, so I don't, I don't know if I can even ask that. And I saw that my internet was unstable, so you may not have heard anything I just said.
Go ahead and repeat your question, Councilmember Foreman.
Okay, uh, it was just, is the, the height requirement that's completely off the table, the applicant's not willing to reconsider just a little bit on the eight feet? Is that just a hard no from the applicant?
Thank you, Councilmember Sean Reger. Yes, I, I'm sorry to say that, yes, but it's through extensive design that we've taken this project for fifteen months. And uh, we did concede down on height after free development. There really is just simply nowhere to go with it at this point with the fire lanes and everything I talked about earlier.
Okay.
Councilmember Hall.
So there's, you know, been plenty of food for thought and um lots of um comments to consider. Um, we've touched a little bit on um the process that um undergone through all this. And, and I um have been asked multiple times on uh why I asked to have the uh agenda item postponed to tonight. So I wanted to kind of walk through the process um and how it's gone um through this project. But it also applies to, you know, other projects that go through the pre-development planning and um uh finally coming to City Council for rezoning um such as this. And um, I first want to thank my colleagues for the support of that motion. I think the last three weeks has been time well spent. I really do. And I do appreciate Mr. Lambert's willingness to roll up his sleeves, to result, to revise his CCPUD to um address many of the concerns that we have discussed um in length tonight um out of um deference to the neighborhood. So um, this was actually the fourth postponement that I had requested since this process began. Uh, the first one uh occurred uh before the pre-development meeting on April twenty-second. And uh clearly that, that meeting went forward. Um, and the sole purpose of a pre-development meeting is to allow applicants and neighboring property owners to meet informally to discuss proposals and air concerns before applicants have finalized plans. This meeting took place even though no other meetings other than City Council meetings were scheduled in the month of April um due to the emergency proclamation in place to address our public health crisis. And even though City Hall was closed um to the public at that time, since we were all adjusting to virtual meetings in April, access to this meeting was compromised and it was difficult for neighbors to participate. Um, these meetings are strictly limited to thirty minutes, which is a disservice to both the applicant um and the neighborhood when, when discussing a project of this magnitude and importance to not only the neighborhood, but to the entire community. Um, each party literally had fifteen minutes to speak about this project. While the thirty-minute time limit is more than adequate for most zoning projects that come before council, I will be pursuing options to allow for more time for the few, few projects that have high neighborhood and community interest. Uh, this gives all the intimate, interested parties an opportunity to work together early in the process. And I do believe it's going to provide for better outcomes for all concerned if we consider um how to be a little bit more nimble when we um have a project of this um magnitude. And I think a lot of these things could have been worked out then. Uh, the second request to postpone occurred shortly before the Planning Commission meeting on May fourteenth. Uh, that meeting also went forward. Um, residents were allowed to participate via Zoom at that meeting or come to City Hall to make comments. Most continue to be challenged by those options either because of inability to participate virtually or they were in a high-risk group that were being encouraged to stay at home during the pandemic and felt uncomfortable coming to City Hall. Uh, the most important reason to postpone that meeting though um really had to do with the lack of a signed lease agreement between the First Presbyterian Church and the applicant. Um, we haven't spent too much time on this tonight and um I think it's important for people to understand what a complex project this is. Um, the applicant is literally unable to operate his hotel without a lease agreement with the church um for multiple reasons, including the fact that the applicant has zero parking on his hotel parcel and has to enter into a long-term lease agreement for off-site parking. The church had to also approve reconstructing their parking lot to add additional parking spaces as well as construct the stormwater uh drainage management systems that will be primarily on church property. Um, in addition, the applicant needed approval from the church to construct the outdoor patio, patio space because half of it happens to sit on church property. Ultimately, all of these things have been addressed, but the lease agreement did not receive final approval from the church until June twenty-second. The city attorney also had to be involved to approve the long-term lease agreement addressing off-site parking, which also occurred on June twenty-second, over a month after the Planning Commission meeting. I think it's important in the future that uh we guarantee that all legal documents should be available for the planning commissioners to review before they are expected to vote on a project. The third request for postponement occurred shortly before the June twenty-third council meeting. That also went forward. The request was made because the lease agreement had not been submitted to the city attorney for her review until the Thursday before the June twenty-second council meeting. And the city council did not see it until the Friday before the meeting. The lease agreement was also not going to get final approval from the church hierarchy until the day before the meeting, allowing very little time for the council to review all of the documents. In addition, since the neighbors literally only had fifteen minutes to address the applicant at the pre-development meeting and no other conversations had taken place since then, I thought it was really important to bring together the applicant, the neighbors, and the church leadership to finally address all of the outstanding issues. And again, I'm really thankful that we had the time to allow that to happen. And um, I thank the applicant, uh, the applicant's attorney and all of the um other people who were involved in the development of the project to take the time to be at that meeting. Um, I also wanted to address uh some of the concerns that we've raised about, you know, how it's working with Center City. And um, literally right before uh we had to address the public health crisis, um, I had a very positive conversation um with the mayor um about uh reconvening the um Center City Administrative Delay Ad-Hoc Committee in some form, um, which I also happen to serve on as a community member. Um, and all of the uh members of that committee agreed to continue serving because we had so many other items that we never had the opportunity to address because we were working in a four-month time span to get things before City Council that um actually occurred about a year ago. So I'm really looking forward to um reconvening that committee in some form and working with the mayor about how to go about that. And um, getting underway with that fairly soon. Um, as for my constituents in Ward four, I have heard from so many of you. And as always, I always appreciate your input and your thoughts on all matters that come before council. And I think you understand that I have immersed myself in the intricacies of Center City Form-Based Code over the last few years. I'm committed to staying true to the vision and the spirit of what so many have contributed countless hours to, to see become a reality. I clearly recognize all of the positive benefits of a boutique hotel to our community. Um, but I also made a promise to carefully consider the impact of any CCPUD that came before council. So out of respect for those that ultimately hammered out a compromise on the importance of the height maximum um in this one and a half block urban residential designation. Um, an intended purpose as a transition to the historical residential neighborhoods that is clearly spattered out in black and white in Center City Form-Based Code, I will be voting no tonight.
Okay, Mayor, I don't, I do not see any other hands raised at this time. You're still muted.
Got it. Okay, I, I don't have much to add. As you can see, our, our council is quite thorough and we take these decisions very seriously. Not just in the impact of the future of our community and what development looks like and what good development looks like, but how it impacts our residents. So I want to thank each and every one of you for being so diligent and researching this. And I want to echo the thanks to Councilmembers Holman and especially Councilmember Hall. You've done a great job of keeping everybody in the loop. Uh, it's difficult to attend all meetings in a normal setting, let alone during a pandemic. And so I, I really, really appreciate uh how wonderful you've been at communicating uh throughout this project. So uh, with that, the motion on the floor is to adopt the Land Use Plan Amendment. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman. Councilmember Bearman?
No.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The Land Use Plan Amendment passes by a vote of seven to two, voting against Councilmember Bearman, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 46, ordinance 1920-52, rezoning property located at 542 and 534 South University.
Lee pissed me off.
Oh, okay, got him muted. Go ahead.
All right, uh, bull, from, starting over on that one. Item 46, ordinance 1920-52, rezoning property located at 542 and 534 South University Boulevard from Center City Form-Based Code to Center City Planned Unit Development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further council questions regarding this item?
I'm seeing no hands raised, Mayor.
Seeing none. Are there any further public comments regarding this item?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Patron?
Okay.
I'll be voting with the same assumptions as I may before.
Thank you. Are there any other final comments from council regarding this item?
Seeing none, Mayor.
All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman?
No.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock? I didn't hear you, Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading by a vote of seven to two, voting against Councilmember Bearman, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman?
No.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Same assumptions, aye.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading by a vote of seven to two, voting against Councilmember Bearman, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 47, ordinance 1920-53, closing utility easements located at 542 South University Boulevard. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item?
None, Mayor.
Seeing none. Are there any further public comments?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Same assumptions.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, Madam Clerk.
One more comment, sorry. Councilmember Bearman?
I just had, I just had a clarification. This is, this is just about easements, correct, between the two parcels?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman?
Yes.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes, I will now.
The ordinance is adopted on second reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I will now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Same assumptions, aye.
Councilmember Hall? Where'd you go? Councilmember Hall?
Sorry. Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you. Item 48 has been withdrawn by staff. Item 49, ordinance 1920-65, prohibiting the furnishing of tobacco and vapor products to anyone under the age of 21. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Jeannie Snyder, Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation.
It's actually going to be me. Jeannie was having some connection difficulties due to the storm. This ordinance is coming forward to council after a discussion in March when we updated our ordinances to include vaping products with the tobacco language that we already had. We told you then that the federal government had raised the minimum age to purchase those products to 21 and that the state was considering legislation to do the same. And we'd be back to update the ordinance when the legislation passed at the state level. And so this ordinance does just that. It raises the age from 18 to 21 for possession of tobacco products and for the sale of tobacco products. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Bearman?
So I had, I had an email come in yesterday and it was something that I hadn't thought of. And I'm pretty sure I knew the answer to it, but I said that I would ask it while we were live so that when we were together, we'd get a correct answer. The concern was about, was for young adults between the ages of 18 and 21 right now. And of course, you know, flashing back to when my mother, my mother grew up in a state where the drinking age was 18, ended up going to college in a state where the drinking age was 21, and that was a huge letdown for her. And my assumption is because the federal law has already changed and the state law has already changed. And I'm pretty sure all the businesses in Norman are already in compliance with state and federal law. We don't really have any way to put in a grandfather clause or anything like that to address those young adults who might be smokers right now at age 18 to 20. Am I correct in that? Okay.
You are correct. It's already against state law and federal law, as you said. This just makes it a violation of our own municipal ordinance. So if a ticket was written, it could be written in municipal court instead of district court.
Okay, great. And that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure to ask the question. I didn't want to just go on my own assumptions. So thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Wilson?
So along those same lines, Ms. Walker, I had an email or some sort of communication that asked me about medical exemptions for THC products, I guess. For, it was a specific young person between the ages of 18 and 21 that needed this for a seizure disorder. Is there anything that we can do in that area?
Well, this ordinance just impacts tobacco products or vapor products. It wouldn't impact any medical marijuana licenses or anything like that. If you have a medical marijuana license, you can still obtain those products per your.
Okay. All right. Well, then, thank you. Perfect.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. You did already mention it, Catherine, but I just want to be perfectly clear. So I did see it posted more than a few times on social media. The city council didn't just decide we're going to raise the smoking age to 21 on our own without listening to anybody. We're doing this because the state and federal law has changed. And the city still has to procedurally bring our local ordinances up to date to reflect changes in state and federal law. Is that correct?
Correct. Because this was totally driven by the federal level first and then the state government passed a similar, or passed similar legislation to match the federal law. And now we're doing the same with the municipal law.
See, anytime a federal or state law changes and conflicts with our local ordinances, we can't just leave it on the books the way it is. We have to procedurally change it to reflect the state and federal.
Yeah, we typically try to be consistent. And in this case, especially the retailers are already having to follow this. And so it makes for, to avoid confusion and make our ordinance consistent.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
No other questions, Mayor, or comments?
Thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any other public comments?
No, ma'am.
Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Patron?
During study session, golly, you talked about, it seems like a million years ago when we discussed this. Anyway, I voiced at the time that I would like to see the fines go towards addiction services or something that makes some sense. I'm not really a fan of a fine for this at all. But if we're going to do it, I would like to see us put it towards some sort of good for the people affected. And then the other part was about if there was vaping as a means to stop smoking, a smoking cessation. I tried to get my hand up for the questioning part and I was just too slow. Anyway, and I think that it didn't make it in there as far as an exception. If a parent wanted to, if they, you know, signed off on it, and I get that and that's fine, but I still would like to see the, I'm not sure we can do anything about it if a doctor finds off on it. But I would like to see the fines go towards something that actually helps them in this department.
That's something that we can track. And if council wants to appropriate money to that purpose, we can do that.
Thank you.
No other questions, Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved. Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 50, ordinance 1920-40, amending Section 8203 of Article 2, Chapter 8, from requiring city council approval for all contracts exceeding $25,000 to requiring city council approval for all contracts exceeding $50,000. This is an item that was previously postponed on March 24th. I will entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I would like to now recognize Catherine Walker, City Attorney, to make a presentation.
Thank you. This was back before council, back in March, and it was postponed to this date. I don't know how many of you remember that, over the last few months of everything, with everything else that's happened. I certainly have forgotten that. But this came forward after some discussion, I believe, at Finance Committee. Our code currently requires that any purchase over $25,000 come to council for approval. Even if council's already appropriated funding for it, it's got to come to council for approval. It was talked about at that Finance Committee about raising that amount to $50,000. And when we brought that forward to council, you all expressed some desire to, I think, kind of make it through the first budget year with Daryl Pyle as the city manager to see, see how you felt after you'd made it through that time. This, I want to be clear, any purchase that we don't already have an appropriation for that's been approved by council, we still have to come to council for the appropriation. So these are going to be things that are in the budget that have already been planned for. And it's just to add to the efficiency of the process. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Bearman?
So I barely remember talking about this. It feels like a decade ago. But when I was, when I was reading this over yesterday and trying to refresh my, my notes and my memory about my concern with this, I do, I do still have a little bit of concern, but it's more, it's more along the lines of when we don't see things, I don't necessarily remember to ask about them. And so my kind of request, not, not amendment or anything like that, is just that we, would it be possible to send council a report, whether it's, you know, bi-weekly or monthly, you know, with, with the, the contract extensions, amendment, amendment, I don't, my, my brain, my voice, but just so that we can get a regular update of what, of the amount between this $25,000 and $50,000 that, that the city, I mean, I think it's just going to be the city manager signing off on it, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that if we could just get a report, either bi-weekly or monthly, of just a list of what has been approved. Because I'm not going to remember to ask about it, but right now I care about it. And I know I will care about it in the future if I have these reports to look over. That way we have a sense of whether or not this is something we need to address again in the future.
Sure, we do now on the change orders that are able to be approved administratively where we provide that report to you and we can do that here as well. I can hear someone trying to speak, but I'm not sure who it is.
I think it was Daryl.
Okay, I'll see him.
He said, yes, ma'am.
Okay, but yeah, that would be, that would be the, the one thing that would make me far more comfortable with this is, is just to be able to have that to review. And other, other than that, I'm, I'm okay with this.
Seeing no under, oh, here's one more. Councilmember Hall?
Yes, I really like that idea. So thank you for bringing that up. But Ms. Walker, if you could just remind me, when was the last time we actually raised the limit?
The last time we raised the limit, I believe, was in 2008. Initially, it was any purchase that exceeded $5,000 in 1992. That was changed, I'm sorry, in 2000, that was changed to $12,500. And then 2008, it was raised to $25,000.
Okay, so it's been quite some time since we've addressed this. Thank you.
Councilmember Patron?
So for me to, to vote for, to vote yes for this, I really like Councilmember Bearman's idea, but I'd like for it to be written in because of how long these have stayed. I think that I was going to say no until we had, my initial thought was I would be willing to vote for this after we have the independent auditor in place. But since that still has to go to a vote of the people, I would be willing to support this if it's written in that any and all expenditures exceeding $25,000 shall be included in a monthly report to council.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to include, I don't know what the number would be, city manager shall included a report to council listing any and all purchases exceeding twenty-five thousand dollars a month.
I'll second that.
Did you get that Catherine?
Yes.
Okay. The amendment was to include in the ordinance, the city manager provide a monthly report for any contract purchases in excess of twenty-five thousand.
Any purchases.
Well, any purchases, yes.
That's an important distinction, I think, because the code refers to contracts, not, not, not purchases.
The code is contracts for or purchases of supplies, equipment, or contractual services where the valuation exceeds twenty-five thousand. So any of those items would then be required to be reported to council if it's between twenty-five and fifty thousand on a monthly basis, is what I understand in the amendment.
Yes. Okay, and that was seconded by Councilmember Beerman?
This is an opportunity for council to ask questions regarding this amendment?
Seeing none.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments about this amendment.
A moment. Nothing mayor?
All right, this is the final opportunity for council to make comments regarding this amendment.
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, will you please read that one more time before I ask you to call the roll?
And the amendment is to include language in the ordinance that requires a city manager to provide a monthly report for any purchases between fifty, or excuse me, twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock? Did I lose you? Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you. Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The amendment passes unanimously.
All right, so I believe we are now back to opportunity for final comments from council regarding second reading, is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, any other comments from council regarding this item?
Seeing none.
All right, seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading as amended unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I will now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance as amended on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance as amended on final reading, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item fifty-one, miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council, remarks should be directed to council as a whole unlimited to three minutes or less.
Zero. Nobody's left and there's nothing on email or the wifi.
Are you sure there's nothing on email, I was, I was told that there was gonna be something sent in.
Let me see.
We can give.
Oh, you're, you're right, I'm sorry, I thought, I didn't see the part that said public comment for tonight.
Thanks, Brenna.
This is from Sarah Warmker. It says, my name is Sarah Warmker and I live in Ward four, I listened with interest to the discussion about the cops grant proposed to hire more SRO officers. There are clearly many unresolved financial details to be defined about the program, including an alarming detail of what sounds to be overtime for SRO officers in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and concerns about putting additional strain on the already overstressed general fund. As others have mentioned, the SRO program is an extremely complex topic because it involves multiple departments, governmental agencies and funding sources. It's essential that before any financial commitments are made, the city take a serious look at the race, racial disparities in disciplinary actions in MPS, especially those involving law enforcement. Data shows that schools with cops are more likely to refer children to law enforcement, including for non-serious violent behaviors, in forty-three states in the District of Columbia, black students are more likely to be arrested than any other students while at school, according to an analysis by the Education Week Research Center. The public testimonies given at recent council meetings, as well as the data from disciplinary records at MPS, show clear documented evidence of the targeting of children of color and particularly black children for contact with law enforcement. There are also many concerning incidents involving students with special needs and mental health needs. This data and information should be included in decision-making on the SRO program. I would like to respectfully, respectfully request that a study session dedicated to the SRO program be scheduled ahead of any vote with opportunity for public comments to be made and for research and data to be presented by experts and stakeholders, speaking not only on the funding issues, but also to recent research and evidence on SRO programs so that council can make an informed decision on this issue. Important recent research and evidence has changed public opinion on the effectiveness of having police in schools. In the past, parents have largely supported the presence of armed officers in schools and until recently, so have teachers' unions. That changed on June eighteenth when the American Federation of Teachers, one of the country's largest teacher unions, passed a resolution calling for the separation of school safety and policing. Excuse me, in my opinion, Norman isn't in the economic or moral position to match grant funding for the SRO program from the general fund, especially when many in our community, including students, are in such desperate need, given the ongoing economic and public health crises. I would greatly appreciate if city council and Mayor Clark would ensure that the public is given sufficient notice and a broad invitation to comment and dialogue further on this important topic. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other comments for miscellaneous discussion?
We do have one public comment, mayor, from Hank Walker, Ward four, I can't wait for this hotel to open, thank you all for your hard work.
That's all. Thank you. All right, well, we will move on to council comments, let's start with Ward one.
I'm gonna be really short tonight because I don't think my voice can handle it. So I just wanted to say, we had a really great Oversight Committee meeting last week to talk about some alternative policing programs that have been very successful in other communities. Had an hour-long conversation with one of the council members in Eugene, Oregon, and she is incredibly jealous of all the local community partners that we have that could launch a program more comprehensively and faster than they were able to do three years ago. And so I simply wanted to mention how much I enjoyed having that Oversight Committee meeting and starting the discussion with members of the community about this program. The Eugene Springfield area that the Kahoots program in Oregon covers is twice as big as ours and they spend two point one million dollars on their program and so I don't think, I don't think that that's an unattainable goal for us, so the conversation continues, but my voice will not, so for tonight, that's gonna be it for me, because otherwise I might not be able to talk at all tomorrow, so everyone have a good evening, stay safe this week in the heat and I will see you all soon.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward two.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, I apologize for my earlier comment this evening, I have nothing more to say, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward three.
Okay, I'll try to be quick as well. I guess there's been many storms this week, both literally and figuratively. But I wanted to extend my gratitude to city manager Pyle for being such a help to all of our wards and being so available to us so that we could send you pictures of the downed trees that were too big for us to try to handle ourselves or for our residents to try to handle ourselves and just really keeping informed with us and just thank you so much for that and as far as the other craziness, I'll leave that one alone. I want to say congratulations to Jody Foot and Tim Malden for the library board appointments. Decided to have library board members from Ward three. Again, I mentioned it earlier this evening, but I got the opportunity to listen to MPS's initial framework for back to school and I was glad that they quote prioritize data, science and medical experts, not guided by politics, when they decided to adopt requiring facial coverings. And as uncomfortable as it is, it's incumbent on adults at this point in time to mask up and model normalization of caring for others and by the time the kids will go back to school in four weeks, hopefully this isn't going to be such a strange concept. But I was also glad to hear that accommodations will be made for kids that aren't as easily able to have, maybe they have an IEP that, or whatever different reasons, a disability, if they can't mask up. The administration is definitely sensitive to that and I just heard hearts for kids that I'm just really grateful for MPS. So protecting each other is a team sport, let's do it. I do want to say that I have any friends now currently with COVID and this is, I don't even know that I have the words to even express how worried about them that I am, but yeah, guys, we gotta mask up, the numbers today are really scary, I wish that I could say that, that wearing mask is gonna be a perfect fix, but we all know that it's not, but if we can slow the spread, then we definitely give our hospitals a fighting chance at taking care of all the everyday things that they do to save our lives, so. And there's a whole lot of, you know, the friends that I have right now, we have already lost one from a death to COVID here in Norman, not a nursing home resident. It's heartbreaking and the friends I have now are worried about the long-term effects and that's completely, I mean, this is something that until it touches you, I don't think that you really understand the anxiety behind it. And so yeah, let's just really try to be there for our neighbors and taking them meals and reaching out and seeing what we can do to be of service. And then I also, as you know, the child that was lost to a service member, thirteen-year-old immunocompromised child in Lawton. Her father, I believe, was a member of the military and had been for thirteen years and that was our first juvenile death in Oklahoma and so I have the same anxiety about back to school and, you know, my family's struggling with what the next plan will be for us as well, but I guess I'm just trying to impress upon everybody that we need to be compassionate of one another and really try to be of service. The next thing I was gonna talk to about is exploring funding for wifi potentially with, for the COVID money. Because we know that there's a high likelihood that the schools will close, I'm wondering, so I wanted to throw this out there with Councilmember Perry as well about what are fiber optic lines, what's something that it just occurred to me that there may be some COVID money that we could partner with MPS. I know they have some, we have some, maybe if we put it together, we can make sure that the kids that don't have as great of internet access or don't have it at all, that it won't be as big of a barrier that we can get this handled in the next timely manner before the schools would have to close, should that happen. Welcome aboard, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Foreman, Councilmember Peacock, good to have you. And I think that's it. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward four.
First of all, I'd like to remind everybody about the public meeting, virtual public meeting that will be occurring this Thursday, July sixteenth, between six and eight PM to learn more and be part of the conversation about the Porter Acres project and the Porter Corridor Streetscape project. This meeting was originally scheduled in March and obviously had to be postponed and I want to personally thank Mr. O'Leary for going the extra mile to get this meeting planned. I really appreciate that the neighborhood will have an opportunity to learn more about this project and the timeline and be able to participate in the discussion and get any of the questions that they haven't answered, so you can watch it either on our YouTube channel, on channel twenty, or our AT&amp;T Uverse channel ninety-nine, so I hope a lot of you will be able to attend that meeting on Thursday. I also want to take an opportunity to thank Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Johnson for their public transit report that they gave tonight, this has been a really big challenge to have the kind of positive results that we've had under very trying circumstances, so I appreciate all of the efforts that you all have put in to get through a year with no break in service, which is a very commendable achievement on your part, so thank you for that. And also, let's see. Okay, I also want to take the time to welcome Mr. Lambert to Ward four and to the neighborhood and he had the support of many in our community. I also want to acknowledge and appreciate his commitment that he made at the neighborhood meeting last week to stay in contact with the neighborhood as the construction phase begins and he was willing to share contact information, so as this project will be under construction, they will have direct access on how it's going and if they have questions or issues that need to be resolved, he's willing to do that and I appreciate that. So thanks to everybody that tuned in tonight, welcome aboard, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Foreman and Councilmember Peacock, look forward to having you on the team.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward five.
I don't have much tonight. Bobby Stevens asked me to tell Daryl Pyle, thank you for the cleanup at one hundred and twentieth and Alameda. I believe I sent an email, but I can't really remember, seems like about a hundred years ago that that thing happened, but anyhoo's, thank you for doing that, thank you for always being responsive. And also, can I just say that Anthony Francisco's giant head of himself behind him is cool. Love it. So y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward six.
Well played, Mr. Francisco.
Actually emailed him that, that his game was strong on the Zoom. I'm, I'm new, so I don't really have much to say, thank you to the mayor and to the council that have been very welcoming to us, new people, to city staff. I got to meet almost all of you last week, so I'm gonna have a lot of questions, so be very patient with me and I really appreciate that. You know, coming into this at a really, really interesting time, I've had a lot of constituents reach out to me, so hopefully I can just, you know, jump right in and, and help out our community in any way I can, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward seven.
Thank you. Just briefly, just touch on what Councilmember Bearman mentioned. It was a pretty, we had a pretty good oversight committee meeting last Thursday, the first one since, I think, February, as I mentioned about CPT. But it was one we really needed to have to have a very important discussion and get things started with how we think we might be able to improve service of our police department and better serve residents in our city that are having, you know, suffering from a crisis. So I'm looking, looking very forward to continuing that, that conversation. As I mentioned before, trying to have a CPT meeting on the 30th, and really, I wasn't planning to have one this month. We don't normally do them in July. There is a specific policy issue involving a female cottonwood tree that's in a city park that is impacting neighbors. And our forester, a Tim Vermillion, has advised that a policy change regardless, in regard to this, would allow him to address the situation. So I requested that whatever suggestion he have be presented to us on the 30th, so that we can at least get that ball rolling. And so we'll get an added bonus of an update from CART on our ridership during COVID, which I'm very interested to see what it's been like on the public transit system as far as ridership with students gone and you know, just everything that's been going on, less travel around the city. So storm pickup still going on. I've had several residents in Ward 7 reach out to me about pickup issues, and I've talked directly to City Manager Pyle multiple times. He's been extremely responsive about it. And the crews are making their way to you. If they're not there yet, they will be. We just ask you to please be patient a little bit longer. They will get to you. And I think lastly, I do just want to mention a couple people. Important Norman people to me that have passed away since our last meeting, and I just wanted to mention them. They were very active in political issues in Norman in different ways throughout the years that I've been involved. And so I just wanted to mention Chadwick Cox and Jennifer Price and Van Harrington. Very, very important to me in the norm, very important people to me in the Norman community that have all done something that has, I think, made our lives better here. So they will definitely be missed by me and many others. So thank you all very much. Thank you all for, everybody that's at home watching, everybody that came down to City Hall and asked questions tonight. We're doing your work, and we look forward to the next meeting. So thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward 8.
Yeah, so thank you, everyone, for the warm welcome, obviously. I'll just use my time to quickly voice my concern with the amount of vitriol and division we're seeing in our city these days. I think regardless of your views on specific issues, specific elected officials, or political ideology, you know, no, no human deserves the kind of treatment we've been seeing in the recent months. I fully believe that we are all up here trying to do the right thing. And so my plea for everyone is just to return to civil discourse, you know, respect those opinions that you may disagree with whilst not simply disparaging them. I know that we can do great things here in Norman, and personally, my eyes are fixed on moving forward together, not further apart. So in that spirit, I hope to be a bridge to common ground, and I look forward to working with each one of you.
Well said, Councilmember. I have a few comments this evening. The first one is for United, or regarding United Way and their ABC School Supply Program. As you may have seen, Norman Public Schools is planning to move forward at this time. I want to commend them on their facial covering policy. But if we're gonna be back in school, we are gonna have to have school supplies. So if you have applied for the ABC School Supply Program in the past, it is for lower-income families. It's for Norman, Noble, Little Axe, Lexington, and Robin Hill. But the sign-up is completely online, and so go to unitedwaynorman.org/abc, and the deadline to sign up is this Friday at 5:00 p.m. Another thing I want to touch on, I mentioned CARES money. No CARES money has directly come to the city of Norman because we were not big enough. There were very few cities in the United States of America that were big enough to qualify for direct funding, where they could disperse as they see fit, which is just outright wrong, because cities are where people live. We provide services. We shape quality of life experiences in this nation, and we are be, being hit incredibly hard by this pandemic. In terms of being a college town, we don't have our 20,000 young people here spending money in our stores. We've had to cancel event after event in the interest of public safety. I bring this up tonight because I want to encourage each and every one of you watching to contact Senators Langford and Inhofe, and encourage them to support any package that provides direct funding to cities where their residents live, because this is where we can make the most difference. It shouldn't be hard to buy facial coverings, to want to hand out to residents, and like maybe a care package, and just have to hope that the state of Oklahoma reimburses us for us. That is blatantly wrong, and we need to be able to have the funds directly to us so we can administer them in the best way, that again, will help our residents get through this moment. Maybe it's, again, securing wifi and, and other sort of streaming services so we can access schools and healthcare if we have to, you know, everyone stays home again. So please, 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 contact the senators and let them know where you stand. This should not be political. It needs to go to the cities where we can, again, directly provide relief for our residents, for our businesses, for our arts communities, for everyone. But you'll see more from me on that. And thank you to council. We actually did do a letter to the editor, gosh, May? We, we were once again ahead of the ball on that one, but now we will hopefully have other Oklahoma City's support as well. I also want to again thank Norman Public Schools for facial coverings in schools. I have a, who will be a first grader and an eighth grader, and we are, like Councilmember Petron said, very nervous about this. We've had our first pediatric death, and if you haven't heard, there have been almost 2,000, 2,000 pediatric cases of COVID-19 in the state of Oklahoma alone, not to mention, I don't know, the teachers and support staff that are going to have to be working with all of these students. So we know that facial coverings work, and I want to share my appreciation publicly with that policy, both as mayor and as a parent of children in Norman Public Schools. I also want to thank the University of Oklahoma for once again delaying graduation ceremony for the graduates of 2020. I know graduation is a very big deal. It's something that every single one of those graduates deserves, but they deserve to graduate at a time when their health is not at risk. And that's what it comes down to for me. So I applaud their wise, data-driven decision, and I look forward to having two graduations in May. I promise you, Norman businesses and hotels will be ready to accommodate, and we will celebrate safely. And finally, I will, again, welcome everyone, but wear a mask, wear a mask, wear a mask, and wear a mask. With that, this meeting is adjourned.